The May 15, 2023 legislative session of the Anarond County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Now have the invitation, Ms. Ravia.
Thank you. As we begin this evening's meeting, let us take a moment to pray in the manner we choose, or simply focus our intentions for the purpose at hand. Let us be guided by wisdom and fairness to address the challenges before us. Let us find compassion to help the marginalized. Let us not only speak of justice, but act in just ways. Let us remember that what may appear to divide us will never be greater than those things that unite us. Let us seek to govern in the image of love, as love holds the wisest answers. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission
So we will now open our invitation to the audience. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, we did receive one submission. It was actually for the proposed FY24 budget, so I have transferred it over to that pot.
Sorry, no one a little bit more prepared, conversating in the back there. Want to bring up the list of signees who had signed up in advance? And who was that? Because it's not... Okay. So we will now invite members to the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. And I think, Ms. Amy, are you here? Okay. Is there any member that would like to sign up, that did not sign up in advance, that would like to speak before this body? Your remarks will be limited to two minutes. And I see Mr. Enright walking towards us. Thank you. I also see our other dean of the council, Ms. Julie Johnson. I think the only other person you're missing is Mr. Savinson over there. The three of you literally are institutional to this body.
Good evening, Chair Smith. My name is Patrick Enright. I live in Huntwood Drive in Gammles, Maryland. And also, good evening to the members of the council and members of the staff. I'm here to talk very briefly about county infrastructure, specifically county roads and their conditions, in addition to the county road rights of way and their conditions. It's budget month. I'm not going to talk about the budget, but I'm going to talk about conditions. I did provide an epistle on my thoughts to my councilperson from District 7, Ms. Ledbetter. The issue concerns deteriorating roads that are impacted by undue redirection of traffic because of the Route 3 corridor and increases in development and traffic in general. So I wish to bring that to your attention. And also on the rights of way, the roadside rights of way, again, I harp on vegetation management. I would submit to you that now it's time in the rapid-growing season to play the game to find the power lines on the side of the road. I defy people to find the power lines. You can't, in some cases, because they are completely covered with vegetation. So I just wish to imprint this on you during the budget season. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm now finished.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I would call your attention to on today's capital. The county exec, as you probably know, has formed a group to address food insecurity in the county, because with the loss of supplements and other things, there are people who are in really deep need. And so I thought, and they're looking for volunteers. And I have a pitch about, and since the weather, you saw what happened with climate last year and the crazy temperatures and everything, you know, if you're gardening, your stuff might not survive. So you need a few years of practice to learn how to garden, you know, and how to produce food. And this is a perfect place where you donate your extra crops or your extra harvests for other people, and you'll build skills that we hope you don't need. But, you know, climate is scary. The second topic that I have for you tonight is that I came before the county council before to ask for you, your help, or that council's help, to see if we can come up with some, or you can come up with some legislative ideas to address some problems that I had, not because you're going to address mine, they're done, but to address, you know, the problem so that other people don't go through what I went through. And I even sent you an email, and boy, was, you know, I struggled. I think I've got your name, your emails, all of your emails, right? And so you have received from me a citation... Oh, is that two minutes? No, okay. I was, okay. I sent you a citation that I received. It was dated May of 19... Not 1917, 2017. And it's signed, and it says, if you look at your attachments, and it mentions that, you know, a county employee is the witness. And so that's one of the documents that you have. And then the second one is one that I know Mr. Volkey is familiar with, because he left the last time I was here. This is the notice of the trial that was sent to the wrong address, Julie Johnson, PO Box 1.
Thank you. Please summarize.
And so they couldn't send it to me. So I had some problems, and we'll pick off this story, and you'll get the next adventures of the perils of Pauline.
Thank you.
Have a good one. Thank you. Oh, and please thank...
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Appreciate it. All right. All right, the invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? All right, seeing no lights. You have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole.
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Your second?
Radby in second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of May 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 8th, 9th, 10th, and of 2023.
Probably could have shortened that for you and said May 1st through May 11th, but we weren't here Saturday and Sunday, so. Minutes of May 1st, the county council was called to order by Chair Smith at 11:00 a.m. It was opened with the invocation given by Arcan Pastor at the Lighthouse Baptist Church in Arnold, and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Minutes of May 2nd, 2023, the county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 10:00 a.m. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present. Minutes of May 3rd, 2023, these were also the minutes of the Board of Health meeting. The county council meeting and Board of Health meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 9:00 a.m. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland. Minutes of May 4th, the county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 9:00 a.m. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present. Minutes of May 8th, 2023, the county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 9:00 a.m. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present. Minutes of May 9th, 2023, the county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 9:00 a.m. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present. Minutes of May 10th, 2023, the county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 9:00 a.m. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present. And finally, minutes of the May 11th, 2023 budget public hearing, the county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 p.m. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Fiedler, and was followed by the Pledge
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 4623, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, fourth-quarter fund transfer, and supplementary appropriations. Bill number 4723, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation, and transfer of funds. Bill number 4823, an ordinance concerning modification to conveyance of surplus property, Free Town Road in Glen Burnie, Maryland. Bill number 4923, an ordinance concerning Second Amendment to Lease between Anorond County, Maryland, and Bates School Limited Partnership. Bill number 5023, an ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, real property taxes, tax credits, disabled veterans and their surviving spouses, and retired veterans, duration.
Thank you. And I'm going to go back so we can make a motion to close out those minutes. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th, 2023?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You made a motion, but I have a motion to amend one thing in the amendment, the minutes.
What is it?
Well, you have to withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
Well, actually, I didn't even, I'll just...
It wasn't seconded, but...
Correct.
Yeah. On the May 1st minutes, it says Lighthouse Baptist Church is in Arnold. I just want to give credit, they're really technically in Pasadena slash Sabrina Park, but not Arnold. So just want to note that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Mr. Chair, that will be fixed. There's also a few dates, I noticed, it says 2022 in a few spots. We'll also adjust that before we finalize and sign these minutes.
All right. So you got that we have that noted?
Yes, sir.
For the record. All right, my motion to approve the amended, I guess, notes and minutes for May 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 8th, and 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th of 2023.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. So a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Wait.
I think I heard a second.
Yeah, there was a second.
All in favor?
No. Aye.
Aye. Is all in favor?
Aye. But I have a question about it.
I'm sorry.
I was not present for the May 11th meeting, so approving the minutes for that one, I would like to vote yes for all of them, but abstain from the May 11th, because I was not present that night.
Okay. Noted for the record. Thank you, Ms. Summer.
So again, all in favor for the motion to approve the minutes? We had the eyes. Was there any opposed to that motion? Seeing no opposed opposition, so the motion carries. The motion, the minutes of May 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th, 2023 stand approved as read. Wow, that was a mouthful. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 1923, resolution appointing members to the Anorond County Ethics Commission. Resolution number 2023, resolution appointing a member to the Anorond County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. Resolution number 2123, resolution urging the county executive to establish a work group to review the county's public infrastructure needs and capital program planning process.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 1923.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I need to push pause for a moment. We need to actually hold a public hearing on the proposed real property tax rate, otherwise known as the constant yield. I'm going to pull that language for you. In the meantime, I think it would be appropriate to call up Mr. Chris Trumbauer.
All right, Mr. Chris Trumbauer. Yeah, I saw that on the one sleeve, but that's fine.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, if you're ready. I am Chris Trumbauer, Budget Office Sir for the Administration. I'm about to read a very specific and deliberate script as prescribed by state law. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the county council. For the record, I'm Chris Trumbauer, County Budget Officer. Thank you for the opportunity to kick off tonight's FY2024 Constant Yield Property Tax Rate Hearing. Section 2-205 of the Property Tax Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland requires the State Department of Assessments and Taxation to certify to all taxing authorities a constant yield property tax rate, which will produce the same revenue in the coming year which was produced in the prior taxable year, exclusive of new construction. The law further provides that if the taxing authority intends to establish a tax rate greater than the constant yield tax rate, it must advertise and hold a public hearing. An advertisement was placed by this county council in the local newspaper, which adheres to the procedures required by state law, and was reviewed and approved by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation. Anorond County's constant yield tax rates per $100 of taxable assessment for FY24 are certified by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation as follows: $0.91.58 for the county, exclusive of Annapolis and Highland Beach; $0.54.88 for City of Annapolis; and $0.89.14 for Highland Beach. The FY24 proposed budget increases the real property tax rate to $0.98 per $100 of assessment for the county, excluding the City of Annapolis and Highland Beach. This rate is 7% higher than the constant tax rate of $0.91.958, and will generate $51.1 million in additional property tax revenues above the constant yield amount. Additionally, the FY24 county tax rate applicable to the City of Annapolis real property increases to $0.58.6 per $100 of assessment in the proposed budget. The rate is 6.8% higher than the constant yield rate of $0.54.88, and will generate $2.6 million in additional property tax revenues above the constant yield amount. Finally, for the town of Highland Beach, the FY24 county real property tax rate increases to $0.95 per $100 of assessment in the proposed budget. This proposed rate is 6.6% more than the constant yield tax rate of $0.89.14, and will generate $20,300 more dollars in property taxes than the constant yield amount. As required by law, this public hearing has been scheduled. Thank you, and good evening.
So I love you, Mr. Trumbauer. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 1923. Is that a difference? All right, the county council will set the property tax rate for Anorond County, the City of Annapolis, and the town of Highland Beach at its meeting beginning at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, June 14, 2023. This will be done via bill number 4323, which was introduced as part of the fiscal year '24 budget package, 4323. While we are holding a public hearing this evening, as required by state law, comments on bill number 4323, and the property tax rate will continue to be accepted all month using the online testimonial tool. We will also hold our second public hearing in the FY24 budget this Thursday at 7:00 p.m. at Crofton High School. We will now open the public hearing on the constant yield property tax rate. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Mr. Chair, members of the council. And just to note for the record, that was an item that people could have signed up to speak. They could have chosen the proposed property tax. No one did.
Yes, ma'am. All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record to speak on the constant yield rate. See questions in the audience, they're confused.
... nine for 11 o'clock.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, there is, actually. It is incorporated into the budget testimony tool, which is available on our website and is open until June 14. So if people want to submit online testimony, they still have quite a window of time to do that. Tonight is just a public hearing that was required by state law. There was two ads placed in local newspapers, and it's also on the website. And it was included in the signup form to speak in person tonight. So there's plenty of opportunity to still submit testimony using an online testimony tool, and I can easily and happily send that to anyone who needs that information.
Thank you. But if you'd still like to come up today and publicly speak on it, please do so at So just state your name and address for the record.
I'm David Morseberger in Davidsonville. I just want to, I mean, first of all, I looked at the agenda tonight, today, before I came here, and I didn't see anything about testifying for this. And I could have missed it on my own, and I apologize. But I'm against exceeding the constant yield. There's a lot of good things in the budget, and we just got to be very careful in not exceed the constant yield. And I will be more prepared on Thursday at Crofton High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Ms. Johnson heading to the perch. Well, you're pretty quick with those crutches there, Ms. Johnson.
Some of you have heard me testify about budget bills in the past, or budget, you know, money matters. And I'm one of those people who says, if people really need services, if we need to have the government do something, we really ought to be doing what we really, what the people really need, because you all are representing all of the people. On the other hand, the nation's debt is staggering. And I think about my children, and, you know, their friends, and their kids, and the grandchildren. And how are these people ever going to survive this huge debt burden? Because, as you notice, you know, the interest rates are going up because the greater demand there is for money that isn't, doesn't belong to, you know, the person who wants to use it, they can charge more. And in my lifetime, mortgage rates were 21% and 22%. That's mortgage rates for houses in the Annapolis area, Anorond County. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, the public hearing on the constant yield property tax rate is now closed. All right now, Madam Secretary, please read the title of any, I'm sorry, read the title of bill number 1923.
Bill number 1923, an ordinance concerning public safety, Bring Your Own Bag Plastic
Go to the sponsor.
Thank you very much. Once again, I feel like I've said this at multiple meetings, we've spent a lot of time talking about this bill. And we have spent a lot of time talking about this bill. But just a quick overview, it basically bans plastic bags. Retail establishments are banned from using plastic bags at their checkouts. They have the option of providing paper bags, but they must charge a minimum of $0.10. And that $0.10 stays with the retailer, and it is there for two reasons, to make sure that businesses of all sizes are on a level playing field in terms of absorbing that cost. And also, as a reminder to those of us who are shopping, that rather than spending $0.10 per paper bag, we really could just bring our own bags. And so we've had lots of discussion, and I think we have a little bit more tonight, so I will leave it at that.
Just go to the admin.
Sure. Very quickly, Mr. Chair, because as the sponsor noted, we've discussed this bill several times. I think you're getting used to the familiar faces at the table for this bill. I have Mr. Michelson, Ms. Valdez, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer with me. Happy to answer any questions. Reiterating the admin's support, and we know there'll be some amendments to discuss.
All right, any discussion? Don't see any... So we'll now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool for 1923?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. We received, I think it was eight submissions of testimony. I'm sorry, it was nine submissions. We received nine submissions online. That's all included in a summary that is posted online. Everybody did get a copy of an individual email as well.
All right, so we'll now open up the public hearing on bill number 1923, and I will go to the list of folks who have signed up in advanced, and I believe there are five individuals, six, four individuals. Ms. Debbie Jansen, please come up. Priscilla Canea? Okay, Canea. Zachary Taylor? All right, Ms. Debbie.
All right. Hi. My name is Debbie Jason. I live in Pasadena, Maryland. So I haven't been here for the variations of this bill or the discussions about it, but in reading what I read online, not whatever amendments there were, I found some things that I'm confused about and some that I simply disagree with. I don't understand why it's impossible that plastic bags are included in the list, since they break down relatively quickly. It makes sense to me to use them, as with paper bags, maybe encourage use of them rather than petroleum-based plastic bags for the things that plastic bags will still be permitted for, such as, you know, fruits and vegetables and bakery items. I don't think it's okay to order businesses to charge for paper or reusable bags. I think that should be up to the individual business. I recognize that preventing use of petroleum-based plastic bags is important for the welfare of the people and planet, but I don't see a reason to penalize businesses for providing alternatives free of charge. That's overstepping. I've been using reusable bags for 28 years. I even keep one or two of the pocket ones in my purse, similar to this one. There are lots of places that give reusable bags away, such as when you open a bank account or visit a booth at a festival. Yes, some are cheaply made and small, and thus aren't ideal for grocery shopping, but some are larger and last a good long while. You can get reusable bags for really cheap, like at IKEA, this was a dollar, or Costco, two for five. Sorry, let me find my spot. Even some grocery stores don't charge much for them. And you can tie the handles of most reusable bags as you might for a petroleum-based bag to keep the groceries from falling out in the car. You can even carry many reusable bags at once, and I found that they don't cut off my circulation as quickly as carrying many petroleum-based bags at once. Plus, the handles don't break as easily, and there's much less chance of any sort of leakage out of the bottom. There's really no excuse why reusable bags aren't in use by everyone by now.
Thank you. I will now go to Priscilla.
I brought this, an assortment of reusable bags, too, that I've used hundreds of times. So, I mean, you can see, this one's been used hundreds of times, and it has not worn down, and then they all go in the wash. So, anyway, and if you buy liquor, you can use your own little reusable liquor, pink wine thing. Okay. Anyway, so you've heard testimony about the amount of plastic bags used in our state and county, the amount of plastic we each consume, the amount of plastic and microplastics in our water, the impact on women, men, and babies, and you've heard something about successes and failures elsewhere. The whole idea of shopping with reusable bags is just not new or novel. More than two dozen countries have banned plastic bags. People have addressed this council to say they want a choice. One council member even wrote an article for a local newspaper arguing that people use these bags for garbage and cat litter. And that's what I want to address today. You're more than welcome to use plastic bags any way you want. It's fine, but I don't want to pay for them. So it's like the rest of your purchases, I pay for what I buy, and I want you to pay for what you buy. I don't want to subsidize your choices. You can purchase flimsy plastic bags by the case at Costco for $0.20 a bag, but every time you get a free plastic bag at the store, we all pay for it. And that includes the paper bags. If you get a free paper bag, it's not free, I'm paying for it. And I don't want to pay for your paper bags or your plastic bags. I can almost guarantee that the shopper... I can almost guarantee that the shopper who walks out of the store with 15 to 20 plastic bags in their cart is not going to put garbage in every one of them. Are there pros and cons to this bill? I have yet to hear a single piece of testimony that supports opposing this bill. Please bring your own bag, bring your own bags, bring your own liquor bags, bring your own everything and let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Never really heard the liquor bag as a selling point, but now I know.
Six, six bottles.
Oh, wow. Mr. Zachary.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the council. Thank you for having me again. I brought samples as well, but I'll use what others brought. With the exception of the cotton tote, every bag that's been put on the dais today, or our table, not the dais, is made of plastic. The New York Times reported that that cotton tote needs to be reused 20,000 times to be as environmentally friendly as a single plastic bag. The amount of water emissions that are consumed to make that cotton account for that. But the real problem here is the cost associated with this. Grocery prices continue to rise and this bill is going to raise people's grocery bills. Whether they have to pay a dollar or two every time they forget a bag when they go to the store, and they often do if you look at what's happened in New Jersey, where people are accumulating hundreds of reusable bags. They don't look like this. They look like this. This is a non-woven polypropylene t-shirt style bag, has to be used about 50 times, be more environmentally friendly than the product it replaces. Research from Clemson University says that fewer than half of consumers actually reuse their bags enough times, creating a climate emissions deficit that can never be overcome. At the same time, there are 175 Marylanders in Howard County making these products every day that are recycled and reused at home. Research from Quebec found that people reuse their plastic bags about 77% of the time. Data from the US EPA says they get recycled anywhere between 10 to 12% of the time, meaning that almost nine in 10 bags get reused or recycled by consumers at home. This is a burdensome bill at a time when people are struggling to bring their food home. I think the council would be wise to reconsider an amendment that was proposed at the last meeting that would provide a greater flexibility for businesses in the community to use American-made, recyclable, reusable plastic film bags that are made in Maryland, as opposed to importing products like those displayed tonight from halfway around the world. With that, I think those are a couple of things that I'd help you consider. If you're not willing to amend the bill, I hope you'll oppose it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Joanne?
Yes, I'm Joanne Zoller from Glen Burnie, speaking on behalf of the Anavonale Group of the Sierra Club of Maryland for Bernie Robinson, who was unable to be here due to COVID. Let's support this exemplary hybrid bill, now amended so that it will work in this county. By addressing both plastic bag waste and the environmental cost of paper bags as well, this bill will likely become a template for future legislation on this matter. Both plastic and paper bags have environmental and social and economic costs. According to Penn State University, Americans dispose of 100 billion plastic bags annually. Columbia University reports that 14 million trees are cut down every year to make paper shopping bags in the U.S. Slowly but surely, county by county in Maryland and state by state across the United States, bills such as the Bring Your Own Bag Bill, Plastic Reduction Act are being passed to reduce this waste and resultant pollution. Let's not miss this opportunity for Anavonale County to take a responsible and lead role in supporting bill 1923. This bill will improve our environment, both land and waterways, save wildlife, save money for consumers in general, by eliminating the financial burden of paying for these wasteful one-use bags. Our quality of life will improve as well. We'll be able to walk, bike, drive, and boat without the ugliness and varied long-term pollution from plastic bags dangling from trees, blowing around roadways, and ruining the aesthetics and quality of our county. Let's make Anavonale County the land of pleasant living once more. The Sierra Club of Anavonale County urges you to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that's the final list of folks who had signed up ahead of time. Please return to your seats. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this bill that did not have an opportunity to sign up in advance? Please come forward at this time. All right, remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record and we'll start on my right and go to the left.
David Marburger, 3021. On its surface and in its title, the reduction of plastic bags is something that we should all get.
Ma'am, is this mic on? Thank you.
I fully support the intent of the bill. Let me say that again. I fully support the reduction of the use of plastic bags. However, this bill goes deeper than that. In Section D, Duties, Subsection 2, it states that a retailer shall charge, collect, and retain at least 10 cents for each paper carryout bag and reusable carryout bag that it provides to a customer. For over 30 years, my family's business, Baybridge Wine and Spirits, has given free of charge a paper bag to all customers whose purchases don't require a larger container, such as a cardboard box. Also, for the past 10 years, we have given away free of charge six bottle reusable cloth wine totes in an attempt to incentivize our customers to bring them on every shopping trip into our store. We would now be required or forced by law to charge them a minimum fee, fine, penalty, or tax for something we have done free of charge since going into business. I understand the use of the word "tax" has a strong implication, but when you create a law that states that I must take something of monetary value while conducting a transaction with a customer, the public's view is simply that, this is a tax. If I am required to charge 6% sales tax on each container that the customer uses, I am literally charging a tax. Let me please state again, I fully support the reduction of plastic bags. Adding a fee for the transactions that utilize the exact type of containers that are best for the environment is not the way to do it. Please amend the bill and don't force retailers to charge for what they are doing right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the committee. For the record, my name is Sarah Price. I'm a resident of Pasadena, but I'm here on behalf of the Maryland Retailers Association. I've been before you multiple times on this issue. I just wanted to reiterate for the record, knowing that it has come to the attention of many more citizens in the county, our members are supportive of the ban and fee structure proposed in the bill. We've had grocers tell us that they would expect that the transition to paper bags would increase their operating costs by over six figures per year. And the overall intent of the ban and fee is to encourage customers to bring their own bag to every single transaction. Setting the fee in law would reduce competition between businesses, it sets an even playing field, and it sets consistent expectations. Every single customer knows what they're getting in every single store that they go to anywhere in the county. We do believe that this is the best way to reduce the use of any single-use bags and to encourage people to bring their own bags without harming businesses in that transition. We also would support Amendment 14 as proposed. We do think that that's a great way for the businesses to be able to connect with customers who may need better opportunities to receive bags. But I would also be fine if you wanted to pass the bill tonight with no amendments. So thank you, we support.
Thank you.
Hi, David Morseberger, David Seville. The environment is very important, is very important and must be taken seriously. I enjoyed all the joking and the seriousness that occurred, you know, at the same time during these debates, especially the goldfish from Councilwoman Hammer. I thought that was really funny, gave to Nathan. But I, by my nature, am normally against government mandates. However, the environment is very special and therefore I support this bill. I do not believe this is a tax. I believe a small 10 cents fee per bag is not something that is really going to cause a problem within the county. You know, it's not given to the county. Therefore, given all of this evidence, I mean, in the evidence that was presented throughout the sessions were really good about the bags and they get caught up in the bay and things like that, we must take care of the bay. So in all that said, you know, I do my part. I shop at Sam's Club where I must reuse a cardboard box in order to take my stuff home. So again, I support this bill and thank you for what you're doing.
Okay.
Hi, John Jason, Pasadena, Maryland. Yes, you just did hear from my wife a couple of moments ago. And yes, I am always stealing this bag from her. It struck me as I was listening to testimony that I was in the people's park across the way before this meeting. And while I was there, I saw four, five disposable plastic bags floating around the park in the wind. I was able to catch one or two of them before I had to come in here and sit down for testimony. But still, this shows the impact that disposable plastic bags are having on our environment. They're going to break down, they're going to get stuck on something, they're going to end up in the bay unless somebody else like me happens to catch them. Also, for the record, and not to sound like a spokesmodel, but these are made from recycled ocean plastic, and you can hold 10 port-sized native plants inside of them.
Thank you.
I know that for a fact.
Ma'am?
Good evening, Kate Fox. I live in Davidsonville, Maryland. I'm on the board of Growth Action Network and Chair of the Legislative Committee. Growth Action Network supports this bill because plastic film bags are not sustainable. They're difficult to recycle. Some jurisdictions won't even take them for recycling. They're single-use items mostly, although they often can be reused. They often appear, as this gentleman just mentioned, as litter on our landscape or in our waterways. They're a blight to our landscape and they impair wildlife in this capacity. So ultimately, one way or another, they end up in landfills where they don't break down. The bill, this bill is also not unprecedented. It's a common requirement in Europe for many years to bring your own bags to the grocery store. And many jurisdictions in the U.S. have similar laws. So I ask you please to pass this bill and thank you for listening. I also ask, on a personal note, that I would like to see in the future requirements that produce bags and food wrap materials are biodegradable or compostable. Compostable requires, the county have a composting program, but it's happening in many jurisdictions around the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members. I'm Matt Minahan from Edgewater, Maryland, and Chair of the Growth Action Network. We, as Kate just said, strongly support this bill. Of course, the highest and best result will reduce pollution on our roadways, but especially in our waterways. These plastic bags take over 1,000 years to decompose in a landfill, and even longer in waterways where they're not exposed to sunlight. They absorb toxins, continue to pollute the landfill and waterways for even much longer than 1,000 years. Almost as good, though, it brings an environmental mindset to all of us each time we go to the store. We think about the environment, we think about needing to bring a reusable bag once or twice a week to help reinforce our own stewardship of the planet and our responsibility as citizens to protect our landfills and waterways. I wish that all retailers were as responsible as our first speaker here in promoting recycling, giving away reusable bags. Unfortunately, they're not. I think that's why we need this bill. And I have a question, at some point when Amendment 14 gets introduced, why there needs to be a time limit to provide reusable carryout bags? Why not just allow stores to do that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. You all may return to your seat. I appreciate the testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on bill number 1923? Please come at this time. This is the final call. All right, I don't see any movement. The public hearing on bill number 1923 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 1923.
Bill number 1923, Inordinance Concerning Public Safety: Bring Your Own Bag Plastic Reduction Act.
All right, let's see, there are some amendments. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 13.
Amendment number 13, this amendment excludes certain businesses that seller provide food for consumption on or off premises from the requirement to charge a minimum amount for paper carryout bags.
Ms. Rovin?
Thank you. This amendment is just a slight course correction from an amendment that the council passed, I don't remember at which meeting, but it was brought to my attention that exempting food service facilities was more than just restaurants. The intent was just to exempt restaurants that are providing a carryout bag for someone who, you know, maybe ordered over the phone and are coming to pick up their meal, or someone who has been dining in the restaurant and has a little bit of leftovers to take home, and that would be in a paper bag. There were some logistical issues that restaurants had mentioned, some restaurateurs had mentioned with respect to when in that process do you get the opportunity to put the 10 cents in the charge? And so we decided for the sake of simplicity that we would allow restaurants to not have to provide the 10 cent, that 10 cent price, 10 cent or more price floor. This narrow, oh, the original amendment, using the phrase "food service facility," would have extended that exemption beyond restaurants to include grocery stores, 7-Eleven, Wawa, lots of places that we want people to be bringing, especially grocery stores, that we want people to be bringing their own bags. So this narrows it to what the original intent of the amendment, I believe, was. And so I ask for my colleagues' support and I move the amendment.
All right, Sarah. Second, okay. Administration?
I think the sponsor or maker of the amendment covered it well. Administration has no objections, matches the amendment that was passed a couple of meetings ago.
Any additional succession? Okay. Seeing that, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 13.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Hammer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment number 14 has been adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 14.
Sorry, the last amendment was 13. Amendment number 13 was adopted. Amendment number 14, this amendment allows a retail establishment to provide reusable carryout bags to customers during a promotional period.
All right, Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this amendment came after a very recent email from a business owner in the 5th District who expressed frustration that they would not, under the current version of the bill, be able to give free reusable bags during promotional events. I know several large retail grocery stores offer those periodically. I can think of a very popular boutique in the 5th District that around Christmas time gives these out if you spend a certain level, and it really supports their sales to incentivize more shopping in their store to provide these bags. So I agree with what Mr. Minahan said, that I think stores should be able to give reusable bags out as they wish, but understanding that that's not the will of the majority, I thought that this would allow a carve-out. This is the amendment that I would like to pass this evening. I do have an amendment, should this one not pass, that would add another layer of restriction that would say that an establishment could hand out reusable bags during a promotional event, but then it limits the amount of days per month. But I'm really hoping my colleagues will support this one and move the amendment forward.
Is there more to it down?
Ledbetter, so moved.
All right. And the second?
Second, I already moved.
Oh, okay. So I'm there. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have not seen an alternative amendment, so I'll just speak to this one. Think this is a policy choice for the council in the bill is drafted. There's some, I think, rationale behind the reusable prohibition. I do want to flag there, this could create some enforcement challenges for the county, but I think we'd be able to manage. but I think we'd be able to manage. So it's a, a policy choice for the council.
As I go to the original sponsor, is there, for me, I guess, is, is there a reason why we, this, this would be bad towards your bill? Ms. Ravi?
So this goes back to the original discussion about whether or not retail businesses should be allowed to give away reusable carryout bags for free at any time. And the concern is that, or the idea is that the 10 cents, that 10 cent charge serves as a reminder to folks that yes, indeed, there is a cost associated with this. Even if the retailer is giving it for free, they really did have to pay for it and this makes sure that the cost is clear. I'm not entirely opposed to the concept, and Ms. Fiedler and I spoke about this. I'm going to oppose this amendment because I, I have concerns about the breadth and the way it's written, because I don't see anything stopping a retailer from having a promotional period that lasts from January 1st to December 31st every year. So I'm, the other amendment that my colleague has brought is a little bit narrower and, you know, I'm a little more comfortable with that. But again, this is something for my colleagues to think about. I think keeping a little bit of a, a window on it will, you know, just provide that reminder, like, please don't come and come to our store and just take a brand-new set of reusable bags every time you shop here, just because we're giving them out for free. That would be a worse outcome than what we currently have with people taking, you know, the disposable plastic bags, you know, taking however many that you need with your ordinary grocery order. So the idea would be to, to just limit it and make sure that reminder is there that, hey, there is a cost associated with this, there's a cost to an environment and a cost to the business owner who's putting that, you know, who's putting the bags out there.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. I appreciate that perspective on, on this amendment. I think I would remind or consider that stores right now can give out reusable bags if they choose to, and they do. It is not, I'm not a business person, but I would think it would be an enormous cost to a business to offer an unlimited amount of reusable bags 365 days out of the year and that's probably why it's, it's not done by every retailer. So again, this would allow businesses to use reusable bag giveaways during a promotional period, so it's often, oftentimes tied to something else within the, the store.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was listening to the testimony. I'm just wondering if this is some sort of a way to sort of offer an opportunity to the retailers, like the first gentleman testified with Bay Ridge, that they can continue to offer this. You know, there were comments from one of the folks who testified who mentioned that it was overreaching for us to put a tax, not a tax, I shouldn't say that, but a 10 cent charge for the reusable bags. I wonder if this sort of allows certain retail establishments to say, I'm going to invest in this promotional marketing material, whatever, during these certain times. Like Councilwoman Fiedler said, it's probably going to be very expensive, but this would be a way to allow them to give away these bags, still do it in a way that they wanted to, and sort of give an out from the 10 cent fee part of this. So just thinking about this, I wonder if this is the compromise that allows us to sort of hear all those voices on this.
Any further discussion? Seeing the lights. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 14.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 14 has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 15.
Amendment Number 15. This technical amendment fixes an internal cross-reference.
Ms. Ravi?
Thank you. So one, our, our wonderful counsel's attorney noted that with a previous amendment, paragraph one was no longer paragraph one and it needed to be corrected, so it read, referred to paragraph two. And so this is considered a technical amendment. I hope my colleagues will support it and I believe Mr. Barron will because he does not like typos.
Or incorrect cross-references. Yeah, we support.
I move the amendment.
Second.
Sorry, I jumped the gun, sir.
Any discussion? It's just technical. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number 15? Yeah, 15.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 15 has been adopted.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 16.
Amendment Number 16. This amendment excludes from the definition of retail establishment, an establishment that provides medical or dental services.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this amendment actually came today, this morning, sitting at an orthodontist appointment with my children and the, uh, orthodontist is working in their mouths and says, oh, that bag bill. And as I'm looking at the appliances being put into very small bags, I realized that the bill could potentially go even far and wider than I thought. So I assumed that dental and orthodontist office would not fall under the bill because there's no point of sale in that moment. However, we were able to get an opinion from the Office of Law today because it is the point of delivery that the, this is, these types of establishments would fall under this bill. I did some follow-up and apparently the industry as a whole, orthodontists and dentistry, when they are giving their patients things to take home, they often give toothpaste that has sharp corners. So if they were going to transition to a smaller paper bag, like a brown lunch bag, the paper is too thin and they're poking through and ripping. They have also looked at going toward, to a paper, smaller bag with a handle, but the weight of like Listerine samples and all of the things that they give out are also too heavy and those have been breaking. So they're not really sure what they're going to do in the future and this is a very long explanation. However, I think it's important to understand the nuances of certain industries. So that is the impetus for this and I move the amendment forward.
Just a second.
Ledbetter, second.
All right. Mr. Barron?
Thank you. I apologize to council staff for a little bit of the confusion. I did see this amendment about five minutes before the meeting. I think this is a policy choice for the council if this is an appropriate carve-out.
Any additional comments from the council? Ms. Ravi?
I would just wonder if we could, because this amendment, and, and I'm not necessarily opposed to the amendment, but because we all got to look at it so late, if we could just spend a couple of minutes brainstorming what other kinds of things might be if we're excluding retail establishments that provide medical services or dental services, could that, for example, capture CVS and their Minute Clinic because they provide medical service and would be unintentionally the same way that we did with the, what is it called? Food, food service establishments? Could we accidentally be broadening? And I'm sorry, I didn't even think of that when we talked before, but I'm, again, trying to brainstorm unintended consequences. Could that be considered? And I guess I'll ask that question of our attorney and ask my colleagues to brainstorm and see if there's anything else we might be neglecting. Yeah. I didn't know if it went to me or Mr. Bennett, I'm sorry. Lori Blair, that's my deputy county attorney. I'll just tell you the, we had a discussion, internal discussion within the law office about this question and the issue that we felt was that this part of the definition of retail establishment that says other establishment that provides bags to its customers as a result of the sale of goods or services is pretty broad and it probably does capture things like the dental or the, the other thing I thought about is when I get my hair cut and I buy shampoo, but to me, that's kind of a retail transaction to me, separate from getting my hair cut. But I, I, it seems to me that if you go to the Minute Clinic and they give you something that you take out of the store, that would be included under this amendment. I want to just ask, I, I know that the, there had been discussion about professional services. That would be the example and that's not in this amendment. In the example that you'd provided of, am I, I really, I guess this is a question for the sponsor and to just make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, so there was a draft, I don't know if it had gone around, that said professional services, dental and medical, but we did not move, I did not move forward with the professional services. It is only medical and dental.
Thank you for that clarification. And again, I'm curious if my colleagues have come up with any other concerns.
Ms. Ledbetter?
I, this might be a question for Office of Law, but along the orthodontist lines, I hadn't actually thought about this either, Ms. Fiedler. I know my son receives little snippets of wax for his braces that always come in a sealed plastic bag and it needs to be sealable because otherwise the wax dries out, the wax has to be sticky in order for it to stick to the braces. Without this amendment, would that little plastic baggie be prohibited?
Okay, first, is the plastic baggie part of the actual packaging or is it something they put into?
No, it's like I see them take it out of two sep, like, the, there's a drawer that has bags in it and then there's a drawer that has their, who knows what else is in that magic little drawer of orthodontic supplies? And I, I actually physically see them with their gloves on, place it in a bag and then hand it to him.
That was kind of difficult, but possibly. I was looking at the, the one that specifically talks about raw food, you know, certain foods that are a consistency that's not conducive, but that, that exception seems to be limited to foods. So it could be.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the dentist office could provide that free toothbrush in a, some sort of paper bag if, if we're really thinking that's a point of sale. I don't know, I'm thinking some of these amendments are getting a little tedious, but are we really thinking that is the same as the grocery store, as the, the goodie bag you get at the dentist for brushing your teeth?
I don't think it necessarily is, however, I think that the definition of retail establishment is broad enough to include it.
If I may, technically, in the zoning code, a medical office is a medical office and not a retail establishment. So I don't know, we could really go down a rabbit hole if we really wanted to, but even still, as a mom that has given lots of goodie bags at birthday parties, there's a paper product that could accommodate that toothbrush, I think, if this was really something that dentist's office was worried about getting caught up in. But I'm, I'll go with whatever people think, Madam Sponsor. I mean, we, this is the last night to amend this bill and this is a really awesome step forward for our county. So I, I just think we're getting a little tedious, but I'll go with however you vote, Madam.
Mr. Volkey?
I'm just going to hearken back to what I've said a couple of times about this bill and I didn't really explain it, but this is why I didn't like the First Amendment. We're either banning it across the board or not, you know, and, and we're either saying we're going to have plastic bags or we're not. I think the problem is that as we start to carve out all these different exceptions and this, but not that, it creates all these questions, which now we're having to try to grapple with, like, well, what do these exceptions actually mean? And the concern that I have, and I'm sure everybody shares this, is we don't want to do something that has unintended consequences and then we're hearing from the orthodontics that they can't do this or that because they fall under such and such a thing. So I think we either say this is across the board what we're going to do or we sort of risk the fact that any of these things could or could not fall in there, depending on who in IMP, no offense to IMP, is interpreting this, right? Because they're the ones who are going to decide. So I'm, I'm not, no disrespect to my colleague, Ms. Fiedler, on this one, but I'm not thrilled about this because I think, again, this is where we just keep going down this, let's carve more out, let's carve more out. And all of a sudden, we're making this pretty hollow in some ways.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Barron.
Just since the, the executive branch will be forced with enforcing this, I think there are some provisions already existing in the plastic carryout bag definition, which it does not include, including small hardware items. Having had braces at one point, I called them hardware. So I think maybe we can, I think we can be reasonable in our enforcement. I think because the way this bill is set up, I don't foresee a major issue of finding dentist office.
Mr., I mean, Ms. Ravi?
I just wanted to express, I, I think I'm going to, again, I'm not necessarily opposed to the intent of this, but, and, Mr. Volkey or Councilmember Volkey, I, I certainly agree. If it were up to me, we would be banning all plastics today and we would be banning all plastic bags, but I think some things are going to, you know, need to move incrementally. People need time to adjust and adapt and I feel like this is still a very good first step. I'm very concerned that this amendment would end up, actually, I, I was originally saying CVS, Minute Clinic, but then it occurred to me that I got one of my COVID boosters in a giant grocery store, so we could end up back in the same place that we ended up with retail food service establishments with that question that a grocery store actually is a food service establishment. So I think, I think to be on the safe side, I, I would oppose this amendment. And truthfully, the good news is that this council of seven members and this county executive will be here in these seats for another three and a half or so years. So if we run into issues that, you know, we hear from constituents that things are being fair, unfairly enforced, or they're being fairly enforced, but there is a consequence that really wasn't intended, we can change the law. We can go back and do that. And, you know, I would hope at some point with respect to this conversation about the 10 cent charge for paper bags or minimum 10 cent charge for reusable bags, that some point in the future, we are all so comfortable with using reusable bags that we don't really even have to think about paper bags anymore and maybe we could, you know, get rid of the 10 cent charge. But the idea would be to help people make the transition. So I'm going to oppose this amendment. That was a long way to say that, but I really do appreciate the sentiment and folks looking out for the community as a whole and trying to figure out how is this going to impact folks?
Please.
This question, thank you, Mr. Chair, is for inspections and permits. So understanding the provision that Mr. Barron read on the record of hardware, do you feel that the department would look at something like dental apparatuses as hardware?
Holly Velez, inspections and permits. That's a little tough one to call. I mean, we try to stick to definitions that would probably be referral to the Office of Law for clarification.
All roads lead to Lori.
Thank you.
All right.
Can you phone a friend? Can you phone a friend? Does she, hardware to me seems like ace hardware. I go in, I want to get some hardware, I need, yeah, exactly, some specialties on, doesn't seem like we would be talking about dental hardware per se. I don't know if Office of Law sees it differently, but.
All right. I see two additional points.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't know why the, whatever is going out of the dental office or the orthodontist office can't be in a paper bag. You buy the toothpaste and the toothbrush at the grocery store and it's going in a paper bag. I don't understand. Like, I don't think it's a, I don't, just.
Thick or bag?
Just use a paper bag.
Ms. Hummer, did you have something?
Yes. So, Ms. Fiedler, I totally get you. I've had five in braces. You name an apparatus, they've had it and to have all those. However, I also remember when we go to the CVS and I get, pick up the prescriptions at the CVS, it's in a paper bag and it's a pretty thick paper bag that they use for prescriptions. And I think that dentist's office could do a similar thing if, if necessary to have that. So for what, for what it's worth there.
I, I appreciate the conversation on this. Again, this amendment was brought forward because I didn't think that, that orthodontists or dentists would fall under the bill, but knowing that they could potentially, I thought the conversation was incredibly important. But after having this lengthy debate... But after having this lengthy debate, if Ms. Ledbetter is willing to withdraw her second, I'll withdraw the motion on the amendment.
Willing to withdraw my second.
Withdraw.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 17.
Amendment Number 17. This amendment allows a retail establishment to provide reusable carryout bags to customers during a promotional period for up to 10 days.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This amendment is the amendment that I referenced when discussing 14, Amendment Number 14, essentially allows the same thing but puts a cap on it to address the concerns of the sponsor, allowing the promotional giveaways, if you will, to be done up to den dates per month. Motion to move the amendment forward.
Sir, a second? Admin, Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think same statement as the, whatever it was, 15 or, the policy choice for the council, I think this helps some of our enforcement concerns. But still, I think the intent in, in the bill on reusable bags was noble, and we supported the bill as drafted.
Any additional comments from the council?
I, before we vote, I really would, because, again, this is, you know, an amendment that we saw right before the meeting. I really would love to hear my colleagues' thoughts, if anyone is willing to share before we vote on this. It's very hard sometimes to get a full picture of what might be involved or, you know, impacts positive and negative without bouncing the ideas around. So I really would appreciate it, appreciate that if anyone else would like to weigh in.
Yes, I would, I appreciate this amendment. I, I didn't support the one that was open-ended, but the 10 days per month, I will, because I agree, I think there's stores that like to use the, this as a promotional, and it'll encourage people to use reusable bags. The gentleman from Bay Ridge, I believe, he's the one that, that he helps our discount to his people that bring in their reusable bag and use it when they're in the store, and so it's the more out there. So I think this is a good middle ground to help encourage people. So, thank you.
I guess I'll say, is that facial expression because you want more additional?
Well, I mean, sure. I mean, your light's on.
Oh, it's always on. No, that's, I think your comment on the last bill was, was pretty exact, where we're going to be here for the next three and a half years, and if we see things that are impacting our ability to move the needle on a, a plastic reduction. And so if, if, I, I don't have any issues with this. If it passes and we don't see any movement, or if it impacts it, we can always come back to the well. So that's the way I view this. Any additional comments? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 17.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye, and I would like to briefly just say, you know, I think, actually, in our conversation this afternoon, Ms. Fiedler pointed out that giving away reusable bags is not a free, even though they're giving them away for free, it's not free for that business owner. So I, I think there's going to be some self-limitation there. So I think this is a reasonable compromise, and thank you very much, Councilmember Fiedler. Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 17 has been adopted.
Bill Number 1923 will be heard on June 5th, 2023. I didn't expect that bill to be up.
Keep my agenda away, too.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2523.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, my, there's also some slowness in our electronic system here this evening. Bill Number 2523, An Ordnance Concerning General Provisions Public Campaign Financing.
All right, where's the admin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, hey, it worked. All right, look at us. So I have a, a brief presentation, but before I kick it off, this bill has been a long time coming. As you all know, the county executive has made restoring trust in government an important pillar of his administration. Part of that is the perception that campaigns and, and politicians listen to those who fund them. So what we have here before you is our, our second attempt to, to bring a proven system, and sorry, my computer restarted, so things are trying to connect. The, well, I, it's not going to work. But the, the, the system that we have here is a proven system, and I'll, I'll walk through as soon as I get Microsoft Teams to go away on, on the slide deck. Hold on one second, let me see if I can just make it stop. Apologies. All right. If you want to run, I can get it back on.
I was so excited when you plugged it up and it came on.
I know, it came on, and then my, it was my computer that did it. Oh, we're trusting this thing? All right, thank you, Ms. Corby. All right, so what is public financing? What is this bill before you? It is a voluntary program. Nobody has to participate in it. When candidates choose to participate, they are prohibited from receiving large contributions from individuals and special interests. Small contributions are matched by the fund, but only contributions from county residents. So it keeps it local. The program, a similar program is available at the state level for governor, and by the 2026 election, a public financing program will be available in every major jurisdiction in the state, Howard, Montgomery, Prince George's, Baltimore Counties, and Baltimore City. It has been used by Democrats and Republicans. Governor Hogan used it in 2014. Former Howard County Executive Kittleman used the system in last election in, in Howard County, and Montgomery County Executive Elrick, Elrick, excuse me, that's a different guy, Elrick has used the system twice now. Once to get elected the first time, and then again in his reelection. Across the program, across jurisdictions, we were able to identify 83 public financing entities that were formed. However, only 52 qualified, and I'll explain why qualifying is an important step to ensure that the candidates that receive public dollars have a base of local public support. So how it works, how do you qualify? For a county executive candidate, they must collect from county residents 500 total contributions of no more than $250 for a total of $40,000 aggregate. For council, it's smaller, 75 contributions, same ceiling on the contribution of $250, and an aggregate total of $7,500. These requirements ensure the candidate is viable, and these qualifying contributions must be made before public funding is received. Matching funds are then distributed, once a candidate qualifies, through a formula. It's a little confusing, so I'll walk you through it. The first $50 are the most valuable for a publicly financed candidate to receive. They are matched at six to one. The second 50 is four to one, then two to one, and then the remainder is not matched. Councilman candidates, it's a, a same system, but different formula, four to one, three to one, two to one. I'll work through some examples so you can see this in action. So in, in our first example, a county, a county resident wants to support a candidate for county executive, contributes the maximum amount under the law that, that, that Jane is able to, in this example, able to contribute. So the first 50, you would be eligible for $300 in public financing, the second 50, 200, the third 50, 100, and then the remainder, no match. And then do another example here for you. Just, you know, somebody with maybe less means is able to give $50, that would be matched at that six to one ratio. If, if, and this is not, these contributions are for the life of the campaign. So if you give $50, it's matched. Three months later, you give another $50, you don't get that same six to one match, you get the four to one match. Did that make sense? So it's, the individual is capped, and that match only flows, that flows and follows the individual through the system. Other contributions, you know, my, I went to high school in Howard County. People want to support me, who I went to high school with, but they live in Howard County. They are not county residents, their contributions are not matched, and they are limited at $250. A political action committee wants to contribute. The candidate who is elected to participate in the public financing system cannot accept PAC dollars. This has broad public support. The Center for Public, what is Dr. Nataff's center called? Center for Public Opinion, I think, did a survey back in 2020 that showed nearly half the county residents support it, only 34% opposed it, and 17% were unsure. The Baltimore Sun editorial board praised the county executive's previous attempt to bring this before you. So that is our quick rundown of, of the system, and I am here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you again, Ms. Corby.
All right, well, before we get to, is there any discussion?
I just actually have a couple of questions for the sponsor. So the first one is, you know, there are possibly candidates already out there who are raising funds, because for a lot of campaigns, fundraising is an ongoing, daily, monthly, weekly, annual process. What happens with funds that are raised before this law goes into effect? Are they allowed to be used in the campaign?
So, once you elect to participate in the public financing system, you would have to cure any contribution above the limit. So if somebody was a county resident who gave you $251, you would have to return that dollar.
Thank you.
Or, sorry, I had it right.
Yeah, can I, can I ask a second question? The second one is, you said per election, and I'm curious, does that mean per election cycle, or primary and general elections treated separately?
Per cycle. This, the limits that I spoke to are for the entire cycle, so primary and general. There is not a reset in the bill, so those cap limits, the county executive can only receive a total of $750,000 in matching funds. Unlike other systems, it does not reset after the primary.
Okay, thank you.
No, please. Well, I was still formulating my, my question.
Thank you. So I had a constituent reach out, and I think I know the answer to the question, but just for the record, was very direct and started with no offense, so whenever someone starts a meal with that, but does not give to any political campaigns and does not want to participate. Is there an opt-out for the taxpayer?
These are public funds, so if you're paying your taxes, the final fiscal authority is council. There's a provision in the bill, let me back that up for a second, there's a provision in the bill that the county executive must propose a, without, propose funding based on what the commission says that the appropriate funding should be. But there is no opt-out for a taxpayer. Just as if you are opposed to public education, there is no opt-out.
Thank you.
It's a lot to chew on. I know we've had the last couple of weeks to, well, we were busy with the budget, and so I'm still on board. We're trying to facilitate a path forward. So I do want to dissect this, the primary, general piece of it. If a candidate opts into public finance, you know, raises X amount of dollars, expends all of those dollars, you know, to get through a primary, they're still, will they, will they, they're still limited from raising additional funds from, from those same taxpayers for the general? That's, that's correct?
So the, they would not be prohibited from raising up to $250 from folks, but if they hit the cap, if they fully got their full match, right? So it's $125,000 for a county council candidate, or $750,000 for the county executive. So once you hit that ceiling, you wouldn't get any further match dollars, but you would be eligible for individual contributions up to $250.
Interesting. How, when you mentioned Howard County and other jurisdictions, are they split on the, are other systems have a split where it resets?
I'd have to double check, and I'm sure some of the folks testifying in support will know this off the top of their head, Montgomery and Howard do not reset, if I'm not mistaken. I think one of the systems that will be coming online in the 2026 election does reset.
Understand.
And just to, to point out, the, the Montgomery County elections, for example, have been quite spirited, and the, the current county executive used it successfully twice. In Howard County, it was also a tough campaign. The current county executive did not use the system. The former incumbent county executive did, he was not successful.
Let's see, Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you. Mr. Baron, I was just looking through, I see where it says the controller shall disperse the public contribution from the fund. Is there a time period under, you know, set so the, the candidate receives the donation, they submit it, what is the turnaround time that that participating candidate could expect to receive those public funds? And oftentimes, campaigns are up against time-sensitive deadlines, and being eligible for funds and being able to receive those funds could be impactful.
Absolutely. So there is a provision that once the, the cert, the fund certification is, or once the contributions are certified, it's a three-day turnaround, I believe, and I'm trying to find it. That said, they do not, and I'm not aware of any jurisdiction that has a rolling dispersment, they set a schedule, and things are dispersed on that schedule. If, there's a summary guide for both the Montgomery, and now Baltimore City, and the, the Howard County systems on, online at the state site. As you all know, when you do your campaign finance reports, it's actually a state report you do. you do. They've created a special portal for public finance candidates and that portal, they work to verify that that contribution is eligible for a match. It's made from an individual who's a county resident.
May I ask a follow up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have the staffing appropriate to be able to handle this additional workload that this would, I think, incur?
So in Montgomery County, they have one full time staffer. I'm not sure in, in Howard if they have additional staff. Our controller was comfortable with being able to process the checks because you're only dispersing the money once every, you know, over one year, over a small period, over every four years, so you can plan for it. The state is the entity that does the campaign finance reporting, so that wouldn't fall on the county.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Mr., please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's an interesting situation because I think there's a lot of people who are going to testify in favor of this bill who would not want to be subsidizing my campaign because they don't necessarily agree with my ideas on certain things. And I feel the same way about other people who would be running. I don't necessarily want to subsidize their campaign. So it's an interesting conundrum that we find ourselves in where we're sort of being asked to fund the ideas of people that we would vehemently disagree with. And when we have a Supreme Court that has expressly stated that money is speech, it's an interesting situation to say, I'm going to fund your speech, basically, right? Or other people are going to fund mine. Because as the way this is drafted, I, any of the rest of us up here could opt to take these funds. Where I've got some amendments on it, but the thresholds as they start are relatively low. It would not be very difficult for an incumbent probably to raise the money to get the matching funds. And then if you keep raising, you know, you're certainly in a position where you have access to quite a lot of money, up to $125,000. I think looking across this dais, just to say it bluntly, I don't think most of my colleagues even raised that much money to get onto this day, onto these seats, right? I don't even think it took that much to run in these elections. So it just, there's a lot of things about this bill to sort of unpack and think about. It's interesting that it comes up in the middle of budget when all of us are completely distracted by budget and what's going on. And we've got this immensely complex bill in front of us for the very first time after we've just spent the last two weeks thinking about budget. So I have more comments, we'll talk about them as we go through the amendments and my, and other items that are concerning, but just as some general remarks for everybody thinking about this.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I'm glad you mentioned the Supreme Court and that money is speech. I think this is exactly the issue that this bill is getting at. This is a voluntary system. The county cannot prohibit large corporations, special interests from making large contributions. This provides an even playing field and yes, for Democrats, Republicans, and independents could use this system. And I think that's healthy for democracy. The county executive has made it a priority and, you know, as to speaking to the timings, sir, this is not the first time we've discussed this concept, at least with you and the majority on this council.
Please.
Thank you. I hear you keep saying how it's voluntary, voluntary, voluntary. It's voluntary for the candidate. It's not voluntary for the taxpayer. It's not voluntary for the citizens of this county. There's nothing voluntary about this. It would be one thing if it was like, you know, you could choose if you were a taxpayer to add a couple of extra dollars or to put money into a fund and you were voluntarily funding it. That's not what's happening here. This is compulsory funding and if people who are running for office elect to voluntarily participate in the system, then that's on them. But there's nothing voluntary for the people funding this.
Any, Ms. Ravi?
To Mr. Volkey's point, I think you could say that about just about anything, the county funds, you know, our county parks, our county police force, our county, our public schools, you know, there's lots of things that you may say, I never use that, but your tax dollars are going towards it. So that, I mean, to me, that is the essence of democracy and what good government is about. I don't think of it as funding individual candidates because if this passes, my tax dollars will indeed be funding, if you elected this campaign, and we agree sometimes and we disagree other times. But I think of it as funding the, a robust conversation that puts everyone on a level playing field. And I also think that a lot of people would take comfort knowing, you know, for me, taking, I would take comfort in knowing that a candidate has not accepted contributions from, you know, the big companies, big corporations, you know, we talk a lot about developers. Other people might take comfort in the fact that candidates are not taking big donations from unions, for example. So I think there's enough, enough in here that's just about creating a robust conversation where, you know, voices, that basically just allows folks to be heard and not based on, you know, the dollars behind their particular, you know, their particular contributors.
And if I may add, just one, one more point on this because I think the, where we are in a, in this country and how money has driven politics, I think is disheartening to a majority of our residents. But just to put something in perspective here, I think you, you mentioned, you know, the, the cost of the program and you and I have had some discussions on the side about the, the cost of the program. But even taking in to the extreme that every single candidate uses this that even ran for office. If that was the cost, it would still work out to be three tenths of a percent of the county budget. It's much likely to be closer to a tenth of a percent of the county's budget, not 1%, a tenth of a percent. So the, as the final fiscal authority, we have to balance all of these choices and county executive has a budget before you right now that does make choices and value choices and you'll be going through where we should be putting our resources. The county executive feels that this is a worthy cause to put a small relative to the scale of the county budget piece of funding to, to help ensure public trust in our elections and to help provide an opportunity for folks who may not be connected to large donors or may not be connected to a wealthy network, to have access to our election by getting the marketplace of their ideas to provide the, and to use that idea to gather the public support, to gain the funding, to be able to get, what you all know, having run for elections, it takes, money doesn't always determine who wins, but it does take funds to get your word out. Each of your districts is about what, just shy of 90,000 people? That's a lot of people to talk to. County is closing in on 600,000 people. That is a lot of people for the county executive candidates to get to.
All right. Seeing no additional lights, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 2523. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we did. We received eight submissions through the online testimony tool. Everybody got an individual email. It's also included in the summary that's posted online. I also want to note that we got a, a letter in the Dropbox out front that was scanned in and a copy was shared with everybody as well.
Thank you. I see we have some individuals that signed up in advance. I will call them up. Please remember two minutes for the, for your testimony. Morgan Drayton. Rebecca Forte. Debbie Jason. I got that name now. Kurt Savinson. And Emily Scar. And then Ms. Drayden. We'll start with you.
Good afternoon. My name is Morgan Drayton. I'm here on behalf of Common Cause Maryland, which is at 121 Cathedral Street in Annapolis here. And we are in support of bill 2523, which would establish a public campaign financing fund here in Anne Arundel County. Public campaign financing programs are important tools that lift the voices of regular Marylanders in the light of the ever increasing influence of wealthy interests on our politics. As we heard earlier, Anne Arundel County would be the sixth jurisdiction in the state to adopt such a program. As we heard, Montgomery, Howard, Prince George's, Baltimore counties, and Baltimore City have all established similar programs and the results that we've seen coming out of those jurisdictions have been really heartening. Incumbent and first time candidates from a diverse array of backgrounds have used this program to run for office, raising money by meeting with their constituents instead of reaching out to wealthy individuals, corporations, and political PACs. We've also seen that these programs have strong bipartisan support. Former Governor Larry Hogan successfully used a successful program the first time he was elected. And we've seen both Democrats and Republicans opting in and qualifying for these programs across the state. This is also the case in other states. In Arizona, candidates from both parties use their Citizens Clean Elections program at equal rates. And Connecticut's program helps Republicans compete more effectively in a state that is heavily Democratic. These programs remain popular amongst Marylanders for simple reason. Since the Citizens United decision, people have felt that the campaign system is disconnected from everyday citizens and that wealthy individuals render the everyday Marylander's voice meaningless in the corporate campaign finance environment. We saw that last year's petition effort, which was raised after the council's failure to pass a charter resolution establishing a program within the county, revealed that there are thousands of Anne Arundel County residents who would have at least liked to have the opportunity to weigh in on introducing a campaign finance program like this. So in conclusion, we would ask that the council have a favorable report. Thank you.
Ms. Rebecca?
Rebecca Forte from Severna Park, Maryland, District 5. So I would like to testify in support of bill 2523, the Anne Arundel County Public Campaign Financing Bill. Since Montgomery County enacted a similar program in 2014, they have succeeded in increasing voter participation in county elections, empowering more people to run and specifically opening the doors for more women, people of color, and low income residents to run. This leads to underrepresented voices from the community being heard and empowers community leaders who have the gumption to run for office, which y'all have, but might not have the financial meets. When community members are empowered, the focus of the county council will be only the issues deemed important to the citizens of the county. So there won't be any time wasted on irrelevant culture war or bills like flag bills, okay? When community members would prefer to discuss the funding of our social workers, we'd prefer to discuss the funding of our school bus drivers, we'd prefer to discuss the funding of our teachers, okay? So this would be the case because the people of Boston would not be the ones funding our county council members. Local constituents, local residents will be the ones funding county council members who feel we sincerely, who we will be funding county council members who we feel sincerely and accurately represent us. In fact, we would feel that way so certainly that we're willing to put money behind that. So, and we don't have millions of dollars or I, I don't have millions of dollars like Harlan Crow and landfill owners, okay? But I, I do make small donations that can propel a candidate forward. And with that small donation, a candidate can then talk to more people and be propelled forward to make, to get more small donations. Our county elections would function with more of the representative democracy that our forefathers, there were no foremothers allowed to talk then, intended. And with that real representative democracy would come increased trust in the actions of the county council members and county executive that, that they best are representing our interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. David? Yes. Ms. Jansen or Jason?
We are out of order. Okay. So Debbie Jason, Pasadena, Maryland. And everything Rebecca said, yes. Please vote for bill 2523. Elections are ridiculously expensive. That means that a lot of people who would like to run for office don't have the ability to compete for it. We're missing out on countless candidates as a result, which is detrimental to the county and to the system. I'm an unaffiliated voter whose needs and beliefs are not always represented by someone in a major political party, especially someone who's only interested in climbing the political ladder or who's beholden to corporations. And I absolutely despise voting for the lesser evil. I want more options and public campaign financing is currently the best way to enable that to happen. Getting out the vote is an extremely important piece of our election system. I believe that more people will be excited to vote if they see candidates that share their experiences and values. Please vote in favor of this bill and vote against amendments one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Abby Root, 1336 Tugway Odenton, representing the League of Women Voters of Anne Arundel County. The League supports bill 2523. The League of Women Voters of Anne Arundel County's support for public campaign financing is based on the conclusions of a national public campaign financing study conducted by the League of Women Voters of the United States. The League's position is campaign finance regulation should enhance political equality for all citizens, ensure transparency, protect representative democracy from distortion by big money, and combat corruption and undue influence in government. The League believes that campaign spending must be restricted but not banned. The League supports public financing, full disclosure, abolishing super PACs, and creating an effective enforcement agency. Public financing of campaigns is good for democracy. Bill 2523 aligns with the League's position on public campaign financing by leveling the playing field for candidates who may not have big donors, reducing the influence of big money on elections, combating corruption and undue influence, enabling candidates to compete more equitably for public office, enabling more candidates from diverse backgrounds to run for office, amplifying the voices of regular people, promoting citizen participation in the political process, and creating an enforcement agency. Since the Maryland legislature in 2014 made it possible for counties to adopt a public campaign finance system, Baltimore City and Howard, Montgomery, and Prince George's counties have approved public financing systems. Baltimore County's public campaign financing system is slated to be in place for the 2026 general election. The League urges the council to vote in favor of bill 2523. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Savinson?
My name is Kurt Savinson. I live in Arnold. I support this type of campaign finance reform, but I did oppose the blank check charter amendment approach previously proposed. So I'm pleased to see that bill 2523 is a less drastic legislative approach. I'm also pleased this includes a spending cap, but it clearly lacks the perspective of citizens because it focuses on the participating candidates rather than the bottom line fiscal impact to county taxpayers. The fiscal note states if all candidates in the '22 election cycle used the system to its max, the cost would have been 8.4 million dollars. Yes, that note goes on to say that actual costs are anticipated to be significantly lower and provides a guesstimate of two to three million dollars. That difference of $5 million is dollars and cents, not percentages, that taxpayers spend to buy things. But I think if you vote for this system, then you ought to be willing to stand up for the cost, as if your ideal scenario is realized and that is all candidates use it. I think 8.4 million dollars is too expensive and risks being geographically inequitable. But I do support this bill if the proposed spending cap also limited the total amount spent. In a nutshell, the total spending cap for a given election cycle should be some factor, I suggest two, times the proposed limit for each contested seat. If this cap is exceeded for a given seat, then the public contribution to each certified candidate for that seat should be proportionately reduced. That's already in the code in another scenario. The maximum cost under that type of system, the maximum cost would be 3.25 million dollars. That's more than the fiscal impacts guesstimate, so that shouldn't be a concern. That's more than the fiscal impacts guesstimate, so that shouldn't be a concern, but that makes the maximum cost a true maximum cost instead of this amorphous, maybe it's going to be eight million, maybe it's going to be two. And it de-politicizes--
Please summarize.
Yeah, I am. It de-politicizes this commission because you would have a much more defined method of declaring what the maximum cost would be. Thank you.
If only Ms. Skar.
Hi, thank you. My name is Emily Skar. I'm the Director of Maryland Perg here in support of Council Bill 2523. Maryland Perg is based in Baltimore, but we are a statewide nonprofit, nonpartisan, public interest advocacy organization with small donor members here in Anarundel County and across the state. I want to thank the county executive for his work on this bill, and I have worked with all five counties on drafting their legislation, as well as with the state on reforming their gubernatorial public financing program, so I'm excited Anarundel County may soon be joining them. As has been said, these programs are popular, effective, and bipartisan. In Montgomery County's first election using the program, our research found that county residents, sorry, that candidates who qualified from the program received roughly twice as many donations from county residents than those who did not participate, and the average donation for candidates participating in the program was under $100 versus non-participating candidates had an average contribution of $1,000. Using these programs opens opportunities to run for office for candidates who do not have access to wealth, and enables candidates to spend more time in their communities, reaching more voters and building support at a local level as opposed to having to chase big checks. It was asked earlier about the reset. I have to correct, Mr. Barron. Howard County is the only county that does not allow the matched, the amount of money for county executive and council candidates to reset for the general election after the primary. We found this only mostly applies to swing districts in the county executive offices where there's contested primary and general races. Most places isn't really utilized if it's just a competitive primary or a competitive general. In relation to the cost, we found the reason that the costs have come in lower than expected is for the same reason. This money is not easy to raise. Candidates can't keep the money when the election's over. They're not going to raise more money than they need, so even though Montgomery County budgeted $9 million their first election and it was used way more than anyone expected, the number of candidates, they still spent less than half of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I urge your support for this bill.
Thank you all. Thank you for your testimony. Please return to your seat. Is there anyone who did not sign up who would like to speak on Bill 2523? Please come up at this time. This will be the last call. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes to speak. Again, we'll start from my right. I'm a Marine. I just, I'm pretty simple. It's easy to go right left.
Alan Lang, Pasadena. I oppose Bill 2523. At a time of high inflation, increasing crime, poor student test results, spending taxpayer money to those running for office seems to be less effective. As previously stated, the Office of Budget estimates this legislation could cost taxpayers between $2 or $3 million, and a minimum could cost up to $8 million. I maintain that this money would be better spent on police, first responders, or teachers if spent at all. We could be increasing the salaries of existing police or first responders or teachers or hiring even more. I please urge you to vote against this bill. I still think that unless everyone's participating, this is not going to work or not going to be the panacea that everyone thinks it would be. And also, in general, nothing personal, but I wouldn't want to be supporting all the people in political office that I don't agree with. Thank you.
Kate Fox. I'm on the Board of Growth Action Network, and I'm Chair of the Legislative Committee. We support this bill, and you might ask why an advocacy group that supports sustainable development and land use and environmental protection would support this bill, but we think it's good policy, and we would think that most every group, different type of group, would want to support this for that reason. First of all, it helps fund candidates that may be less well-funded, increasing diversity of candidates willing to serve in elected positions, as you all have chosen to do. Second of all, as Pete Barron pointed out, candidates in other jurisdictions have been successful in being elected while helping to finance their campaigns with public funding. The best example, of course, is Governor Hogan. Third, it's a big step towards reducing the influence of special interests in campaigns. Now, we know it won't stop special interests because they can run parallel to a candidate's campaign, but we think it's a big step towards it. So for this reason, we think that the public financing is a good policy, and we ask you to pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Matt Minahan, Edgewater, Maryland, Chair of the Growth Action Network. We strongly support this bill. A basic tenet of good government is to allow people to run for office without having personal wealth or corporate sponsorship. In this way, ordinary citizens who hustle and organize can have a voice, not a huge voice, but a modest voice, in the political process. It raises, it lowers the bar of entry. It allows people without means to enter into the political conversation and to be taken for granted if they can hustle up and meet the requirements of this bill, allowing less wealthy candidates, underrepresented candidates, and diverse candidates into the political conversation. We know of several upstart candidates who tried to operate a grassroots candidacy but who were greatly outraised and outgunned by support from commercial interests, who have business before the council. They have no chance in the money wars. So hustle was not enough. They needed more money, and this bill won't solve all those problems, but we like that it gives a fighting chance to candidates who have a base of support and can hustle. If the business of good government is to make better government, this bill is a big step in the right direction. We encourage the council to reject Amendments 1 through 15 proposed for this bill, which we see as poison pills, elegant, but poison pills, to undermine the intent of the bill. And I will happily support the public funding for Mr. Volkey's campaign, as long as I can also support the public funding of his opponent.
Wow. Man, that was le, that was sniper material right there. Oh, my God. So, Mr. Enright?
Members of the council, members of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright, Huntwood Drive in Gambros. I'm here to support, speak in support of the Bill 2523. I have submitted written testimony, and I want to address part of that. I recognize the concerns of Mr. Volkey, Ms. Fiedler, and Mr. Barron as related to the Citizens United dark money fund source for insidious detriment to our democracy. What I want to propose is the fact that we, Anarundel County, are unique. We have an unbiased funding source for just this purpose, and I mentioned this in my testimony, and that is the monthly stipend we get from Maryland Live Hotel and Casino by state law from the table games revenue that's unallocated, unlike the VLT money, which is allocated or mandated for mitigating the impact on the casino area. This money runs about $9 million a year average, and I see on page three at the bottom where it says source of funding, the funds consist of, all funds appropriated to it by the county council. I don't see why the matching funds out of the general fund where this table games money goes can't be labeled as such as contributing by the county council to matching funds going to the public campaign financing. That's an unbiased source, non-taxpayer, reduces taxpayer angst, and it's unique to our county, plus the four or five other counties, and I would suggest that you take that under consideration in terms of labeling, identifying for the taxpayers, so they know that their money specifically is not going, it's the gambling money that's going to it. Thank you.
Lastly, to you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm kind of, well, I don't follow, you know, I don't, I disagree with some of the people who have spoken, not because I disagree with the concept of helping people who really needs assistance, help, training, guidance, and all the other things you need financial assistance with. But I listened very closely when, you know, Nancy Pelosi was leading, you know, the House of Representatives with this wonderful bill, and there was going to be public financing for everybody, which sort of following Mr. Volkey means that everybody gets to pour in millions of dollars for our favorite senators of both parties who lead the both parties, where there is some disagreement and concern. I'm more inclined to say we really need to do something about, you know, getting out the dark money, and, but there is this money from these different campaign funds. Have you ever noticed that there is a senatorial fund, and that there's the Republican Party Fund and the Democratic Party Fund and all of these other things, and you noticed that in Maryland, the Democrats, you know, donated a lot of money to a Republican candidate in the hope that that candidate would lose so that their candidate could have a whopping win. Well, that's not kosher. It's not, it's not integrity. It doesn't produce a fair outcome. So, and I, Mr. Enright is really enthusiastic about finding constructive uses for the casino money, and I tend to agree that he's got some good ideas, but I think as other people have said, you know, seven, eight, nine million dollars can do some other things that are needed, that, you know, for, you know, that have more, you know, a greater demand, because the real issue is how do we make it a level playing field? Can we ever say that you parties don't get to run the election so that we have just two parties and nobody else? Because I will tell you, there is a very sizable group of so-called independents that aren't.
Thank you. Thank you all. Please return to your seat and appreciate the testimony. All right. The public hearing on Bill Number 2523 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2523.
Bill Number 2523: Inordinance Concerning General Provisions Public Campaign Financing.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment increases the number of qualifying contributions a candidate for county executive must receive in order to be certified as eligible for public campaign financing.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This takes the number from 500, which is .083% of the county's population, to 1% of the county population at 6,000. I would just note for my colleagues that in our charter, to get a charter amendment on the ballot, it requires 10,000 signatures, so this still is a lower number to get public financing for your ideas as a county executive candidate than it takes to get your idea on the ballot for citizens to consider as a charter amendment. Ask for your support.
Mr. Motion to Adote. Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
Mr. Barron?
We ask the council to oppose this amendment. I think the, if you look at the total number of contributions that folks have received over the years in county executive races, does not come close to 6,000. This would effectively put a bar to participation that would be unattainable for participation, would effectively render the program dead. Please oppose it.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Sorry. Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
May.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number One has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment increases the number of qualifying contributions a candidate for council member must receive in order to be certified as eligible for public campaign financing.
Mr. Volkey?
Similar to Amendment One, takes it to a 1% threshold. Our council districts are about 87,000 people. This is just slightly under 1%. Currently at 75, that is .086% of our population would have to give us a contribution to qualify. That is hardly the broad base of support that we're talking about. Move Amendment--
Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
Mr. Barron?
Same rationale as the last bill, but to point out again, the requirements are for individual contributions. So if you look at every member here, not a single one of you would have qualified. It would kill the program. Please oppose this amendment.
All right. Any additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been defeated.
Thought I heard some music. That's--
I thought so, too.
Oh, I thought it was just me. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment reduces the total amount of public contribution a candidate for county executive may receive for an election cycle.
All right. Mr. Volkey?
Decreases the overall cost of the program by limiting the number that can be given from the public coffers to $100,000 down from the current $750,000. Move the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barron?
Again, this would render any candidate that accepted this unable to effectively communicate their message across the county. This would kill the program. Oppose this amendment.
Any additional--
Yeah. Mr. Volkey? Mr. Chair, thank you. So I hear that. I hear what you're saying, but I would also say that with the right candidate who is out, boots on the ground, knocking on doors, running a grassroots, excuse me, campaign, $100,000 can go a long way in this county, and, you know, recognizing that the county executive has won twice against candidates who have both had more money than him, I think to your point that you said earlier, you recognize money doesn't necessarily always rue the day when it comes to elections. And when we get to the next one, I'm going to talk about certain instances of where candidates for county council have frankly raised more money than their opponents and still lost. So I'm just making the point that with $100,000, you can make some noise in this county if you know how to use it in the right way. If you're targeted on social, if you have the ability to do targeted mail, you know, you may struggle to get on network TV, but there are certainly opportunities that you can really get your message out there even with $100,000. So I just want to push back on this idea that somehow this is a pittance and this isn't going to allow anybody to win.
I don't even know where to begin. Mr. Volkey, I think you're absolutely right, and I think we've talked about our philosophies on campaigns and totally agree. Money does not always win the day, but this cuts this program off at the knees. No rational candidate would take this and be able to fund a campaign that could mount the kind of repeated communication that you need to do in order to get your message through. Period. End of sentence.
All right. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barron basically said it, but I think my colleague to my right knows that 100%. He knows that the county executive race is a million-dollar race currently, so $100,000 does not adequately communicate to 600,000 residents or even the 47% that might vote. I think he probably spent more than that in his election running unopposed, so.
I didn't spend it in the race against you, and I didn't spend it in my own race that much because I'm pretty cheap, but, but I hear you. How, I just--
And so is the county executive.
Well, I was going to ask, so how much did he spend in his race the first time?
The first time was slightly under $800,000.
Okay, how much did he spend last time?
I don't know off the top of my head. I was not the campaign manager.
I thought it was ballpark the same number.
It was, it was close.
Yeah.
It might, it was a little bit more, but I don't know off the top of my head.
So then if, just kind of thinking this through, if you raise individual money, if you can continue to raise individual money under the caps, and if you get the matching funds of 750, I think you could very easily be close to $1 million between the amounts that are coming in from the matching funds coupled with private donations, right?
I just fundamentally disagree.
Well, I hear you. I understand we disagree on this, but I'm trying to make the point that if your number is you think you need 700,000 to run competitively in this county for county executive, because that's, candidly, the county exec ran against somebody in 2018 who had $3 million, and he had 700,000 ballpark, little--
The campaign manager was pretty good.
Huh? Yeah. So is there a number that we could decrease to 750, too, where coupled with the private money plus the matching, that it would not be 100, but it would not be 750? Is there some number in there where there's still an impact to the program, but it's not the same fiscal impact?
This program is modeled off of proven successful programs in other counties. This program is modeled off of proven successful programs in other counties.
Okay.
We picked this number for a reason. It is, there will likely be, if there is a future county executive candidate that uses this program, it is likely their opponent will have private dollars that would exceed that. This would make them at least competitive where, again, it's the marketplace ideas. You have the ability to reliably and effectively, if you're smart and frugal with your dollars, inspire volunteers and do all the things that don't cost dollars, can win and can be competitive. This is the proven sort of target we thought was appropriate.
Can I follow up? So what did you look at? Like, who did you specifically look at? What races where you came up with this number? And you said 750 is the number. Because you're saying, and I hear you, and I believe that you probably did, you looked at certain data points or certain metrics to come up with this. What did you look at? What were those data points or metrics?
This has been used in three cycles, two in Montgomery and one in Howard.
This exact number? 750?
I'd have to go back to my notes. I think it's been 750, yeah.
Okay. All right. Am I right?
Well, this is probably, this information's a couple of years old, but it was 750 in Montgomery and 700 in Howard. 750 in PG.
How much at Howard?
I have 700, but this might be, this is a year and a half old, but I don't know if they've changed it.
Any additional questions? Seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Three has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This amendment reduces the total amount of public contribution a candidate for council member may receive for an election cycle.
Mr. Volkey.
Yes. Thank you. This amendment is similar to the last amendment in that it reduces the amount from $125,000 that would go to a council member to $16,667. So that's a smaller number. Again, it decreases the impact of the bill. I will just add, since we're here, that there are actually people who have won seats on the county council with less than $16,000. I'm specifically thinking of a candidate who won in the primary four years ago against -- should I bring it up? Should I say it?
Please. I'm a transparent, open book.
Yeah. So there was a candidate that ran against Mr. Smith at the time, who was the incumbent, and I think that candidate raised a few thousand dollars in the primary. And in the general, I think even then, the maximum amount that was raised was less than $10,000 against an opponent who had close to $90,000, and she still won handily. So this amount of money in the council race, again, can be deployed very effectively, and it has been deployed effectively before. So I think a lower threshold here, $125,000. Ms. Ledbetter didn't raise or spend that much money. Ms. Radvian didn't raise or spend that much money. Ms. Fiedler got close, but I don't think you even spent that much money. Mr. Smith certainly didn't. Ms. Hummer didn't. I never did. And Ms. Pickard got close, but I'm not sure you went over 125. You might have. But that's really it. Like, it doesn't, those of us sitting up here didn't even spend that much money to win our election. So the idea that we're going to go to 125, that's a huge number. So I'm moving the amendment, but I'd ask for support.
All right. Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Barron.
So again, ask the council to reject this amendment. It's important to understand, 125,000 is the cap. So just because you qualified for public financing does not mean that a county executive candidate or a county council candidate gets that dollar amount. You have to raise individual contributions under the $250 limit and climb up that ladder. So this would, this would be only for a candidate that quote-unquote "maxed out" their matches. And while you reference what folks here did, I think there have been campaigns that have been expensive. We felt that this was an appropriate match, appropriate cap to make sure that if a candidate is participating in this election, is in this program and is in a competitive election, that they, and can gather the public support, they can get a reasonable match that would keep them competitive. That, that number is enough to communicate effectively to the about 90,000 people that are in a councilmatic district.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like before, I think, Mr. Barron, you said it correctly. It's you have to actually get to the cap. But we also, this bill doesn't reset after a primary. So it's likely a candidate would have a contested primary in many of the districts on both sides of the aisle before even getting to a general. So we're talking about essentially two campaigns. So I think, I think the number has been set appropriately. I think this, I really think this amendment is meant to just kill the program, as are the rest of these amendments. My colleague to my right has no intention of voting for this bill, if it was amended or not. So I would urge my colleagues to just reject this amendment like the others.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for point of perspective, since we're talking about historical campaigns of current council members, my first election, primary and general combined, I think I raised $60,000.
Sixty.
Six, zero. Yes.
Okay. Seeing no more lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Four has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five. This amendment provides that a certified candidate does not include a candidate who holds elected office at the time of filing for a covered office.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one, I would hope my colleagues would give some serious consideration to. This basically cuts out the incumbents, right? So we are not eligible to be able to get these funds as current office holders if we are running for council again or if we are running for county executive. I think that's a reasonable provision to put in place to say that we're not voting in some kind of benefit that we can then subsequently use for our own purposes. So I would ask for your support. Move the amendment.
Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
Mr. Barron.
We'd ask you to oppose this amendment just for point of reference. This program in Montgomery County was used successfully by the incumbent county executive. You would be basically setting up a system whereby you would use the public financing system and then have to transition over to the traditional go hustle, make call time, call a bunch of wealthy donors and get your funds. That, I think, goes counter to the intent of this program. The intent of the program is to ensure that the elections are clean, but once folks get in, that they still have the ability to remain a publicly funded candidate. And that worked in Montgomery County. The current county executive was, faced a repeat of a very well-funded challenger who came from the same, his same candidate who ran against him and contested when he was incumbent, was able to withstand it and part of it was, remained a publicly funded candidate, in my opinion. So by, I understand the intent of Mr. Volkey to try to cure any appearance for himself or members of this body, but by including a prohibition on incumbency, you are then taking away the ability of what this system exists for, which is to help restore public trust in our elections. Ask that you reject this amendment.
Mr. Barron, quick question. Would you entertain a motion or some sort of, this is just for general knowledge, that something that applies just to this body? Not future candidates who get into the system and they stay on the system, but just to the members up here.
Again, I think, I would hope that, and I think the point of this bill is to increase trust in county government. I think it should be available to members here. Again, the way the system is structured, you would not be able to use non-qualifying contributions to get into it. I don't think that that would be necessary. I think that the better approach here is to have a system that is open to all. And I don't know if any member here would want to use it, but I think it should be available to you if you so desired.
Any additional comment? Please.
Thank you. I just have to say, I would love to have the opportunity to put the different members of my donor base on a more level playing field. I have, in both my 2018 campaign and my 2022 campaign, I had donations as small as $10. I had donations as large as $2,000 from individual donors. You know, there were, the organizations, you know, can max out, well, individuals can max out at 6,000, too, but I don't know those folks that can write a $6,000 check. But I really, really like the idea of having those donations put on a more level playing field. So the, because I believe that every person, regardless of their wealth, deserves a loud voice in county government, especially if they're choosing to engage. So if I have a donor that gives me, you know, let's see, maybe a $25 donation, I forget what that adds up to, but that certainly gets a lot closer to, you know, the, at least, you know, it puts them on par and takes the organizational interests out of the game. It becomes all about the individuals. And in the end, we represent individuals, not organizations. I mean, of course, we want to, we care about organizations because of the impact they have on individuals, but when it comes down to, it's we, the people, not we, the organizations, we, the labor unions, or we, the corporations, or we, the nonprofits. It's individual people that we're supposed to be representing. So I'll just be right up front. If this passes, I'm very interested.
Any additional comments? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Five has been adopted.
Madam--
Defeated.
Thanks. Amendment Number Five has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Six.
Amendment Number Six. This amendment prohibits a certified candidate from receiving a public contribution for a contested election in the general election unless the certified candidate participates in a primary election immediately preceding the general election.
Mr. Volkey.
Sure. I'll explain it so everyone understands what it means. So what it means is that if you're going to take this public financing, then you need to run not only in the general but also in the primary. What this would do is exclude folks who come in after the filing deadline and do not run in the primary, but then come in and run in the general election, or people who come on as writing candidates after that. So effectively, this is saying, if you're going to go through the process, go through the process the way that all of us have to go through the process, which is start to finish, run through a primary, run through a general. That's what this says. Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Vol-- or, Mr. Barron.
Ask council to reject this. I think the sponsor is forgetting a very important piece of our electorate, and it was referenced. There are independents in this county. Independents don't necessarily have to go through a primary process. So you would basically say that this is only available to Democrats and Republicans. We don't think that's appropriate.
Madam Vice Chair.
Oh.
I think she's just ready, well, I won't even say what she's ready to do. Mr. Volkey.
Have we had unaffiliated candidates run in the last election for council or for county executive?
Who's that?
With the who?
In the last election, I know we had, did have a writing candidate.
Yeah, I remember that.
I do not, I don't know if we've had an independent, but I know this would help expand the marketplace of ideas and make it available to folks that maybe don't have the support of a large party apparatus.
Mr. Barron, quick question. So for, just because I'm curious now, for Democratic and Republican candidates who have a primary, is there an opportunity for a Democrat? Yeah, I think there, I think I answered my question, because if a candidate runs and wins a primary and they're unable to agree or complete that general election, the Central Committee could then appoint someone to replace them in that process. I think that's one of the only, like, you can't be, if we don't have, like, if you have District One and no Democrat runs for District One, because I'm a Democrat, after the filing deadline, and then once the general, once the primaries of, in the general election, the Central Committee can't appoint anyone to fill the Democratic seat because no one had signed up in the primary and chose not to seek the general election term. Is that correct? Maybe we should have Board of Elections there.
Yeah. I, if I'm following you correctly, there is a very short window right after the filing deadline if a party did not have a nominee in that race where the Central Committee can put somebody up.
But I thought it was only if--
But if a candidate, say, you know, tragically dies.
Right.
Or something like that. I'd have to check on the provision of, I don't think there is a way to--
Right.
--run somebody.
I think, yeah, you're right. I think they appoint only if someone chose not to, or they died or something like that, and then they can fill it. But if there was no candidate, no one's going to jump in, you know, to the Central Committee and say, hey, can you appoint me to be on the ticket for the D?
It's like a week-long window right after the filing deadline. Am I right, Mr. Volkey? It's like, maybe it's 10 days at most?
Seven.
It's seven days, yeah.
But I still only believe it was for if someone had died or they chose not to.
Right. So the filing deadline is usually in, like, February.
Check.
Five o'clock on that Friday. By five o'clock on that next Friday is the window where the Central Committee could appoint somebody.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes. I just, to an earlier point that's made, I know at least one candidate, one sitting person here in the candidacy, had a third-party candidate on the ballot. Ms. Pickard did. Yes. So there are some that do not have a part, do not have a primary but would be a part of the general election. We have seen that recently.
I'd forgotten about that. Thank you.
All right. Fiedler.
Thank you. I know that this is not an amendment before the council, but after hearing the discussion, what would the administration's thoughts on a similar amendment but saying that someone may not qualify if they file after the filing deadline? Or if they announce after the filing deadline or become a candidate after the deadline?
Again, I think the, in order to qualify, there is a bar. In order to get the support to receive matching funds, if you remember one of my slides, the provision in the bill is located, hold on. Yeah, to qualify on page four, if it's for a council candidate, you would have to receive 75 contributions for an aggregate total of $7,500, all under $250. So I think the check on this concern is, in order to do that, that individual would have to gain some level of public support. That individual would be able to accept large donor PAC dollars if they were not in the system. So this creates a way for somebody who is able to gather some level of public support, the ability to get the matching funds. So I think, I understand you're trying to thread a needle there, but I think we would oppose that amendment without having seen it on paper.
Appreciate that. And just if I may make a comment.
Please.
For the public listening at home or watching here, a lot of the reason why, that we are hashing this out and asking a lot of questions right now is that we not had a work session on this bill because of budget. So that's why we're spending a lot of time discussing this big piece of legislation.
True.
Thank you. I think I may have answered my own question in the time that I was waiting, but I'm going to ask it anyway for 100% clarification, in case anyone else was wondering. So if the candidate, okay, the candidate must participate in a primary. I'm assuming it does not matter whether or not that primary was contested, because I believe, actually, there have been many uncontested primaries on the ballot, you know, over the years. So that, it is only a primary, does not have to be a contested primary. Is that correct?
If you file as a Democrat or a Republican in this state, you are on the primary election ballot.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the rule on amendment number six.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative. Amendment number six has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number seven.
Amendment number seven. This amendment alters the start of the dispersment period for public funds from 365 days before the primary election to 180 days.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 365 before an election is a long time to be dispersing out the money. So this puts it a little closer to the election. If the intent is that this is going to be used for the election, I don't know many campaigns that start spending serious campaign dollars a year in advance of the election, unless you're David Trone running for U.S. Senate, because I have seen his TV commercials already. So, anyway, move amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baron.
It's in stereo over there. So I think you raise a good point. Well-funded candidates can start spending whenever they want. Having the ability, you know, there are strategic decisions that campaigns will have to make. There is a cap on the money that they can get from public dollars. So it is up to that campaign, what is the right timing to get their message across. There is an argument sometimes for spending early. There's an argument for sometimes holding until closer to people are in the ballot box. That decision should be left in the hands of the campaigns. The, an arbitrary 180 days compresses it and could force a campaign to not have the tactical freedom that maybe their opponent would have. So having a provision that shrinks it right before the election is something we oppose. We ask you to reject this amendment.
Any additional comments? Well, I do appreciate the comment, because I must say that I never want to be seen as rubber-stamp to some extent. I do want it to make some logical sense, right? And so everything you said so far makes logical sense. And so that's why I've stayed with you on this, but just wanted you to know that. Seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the rule on amendment number seven.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment number seven has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eight.
Amendment number eight. This amendment prohibits an applicant candidate from accepting a contribution or loan from themselves or their spouse.
Mr. Volkey.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So currently, there is no prohibition in this. Effectively, if you're very wealthy, you can do two things with this bill. You can come in and you can use the bill to get public money into your campaign. You then can also use the fact that it's not precluded by this bill to take advantage of the loophole in state law, which allows you to give yourself unlimited money from yourself or a spouse. You can make loans to yourself in the campaign finance law, which we all know, that's, that's in there. And you can put unlimited amounts into your own campaign. So there is no prohibition on that in the bill at current. This would say that if you're going to take the public money, then you are going to have to say, you're not going to loan yourself money, and you're not going to have your spouse loan yourself money. There's a couple other amendments that are consistent with this. So quite frankly, if the council votes this up, then we'll do the other ones. If the council votes this down, then I'll probably withdraw the other ones, just because it doesn't make sense to sort of keep beating the dead horse. But from a philosophical standpoint, I am opposed to the idea that if you are taking public campaign financing, that you are then going to also have the ability to loan yourself money, or have your spouse loan you money.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baron.
So there is a prohibition, a limitation in this bill. Page four, line 26. An applicant candidate, applicant spouse may not contribute or lend a total of more than $12,000. The, and I appreciate you saying that. There is a loophole in state law. There was a particular candidate that put half a million dollars of personal money into a race last year. I just ask the council to reject this.
Seeing no additional discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the rule on amendment number eight.
Ms. Radvian.
I'm going to vote nay, but this actually gets a little closer to something I might be willing to support, but knowing that there's, that there's, there's already a limit personally, you know, just, well, we don't need to get personal. I feel like, you know, folks need to make sure that they're not funding their own campaigns. At least folks that don't have a million dollars, it's wise to make sure you're fundraising and not self-funding out of money that you need for your children's education or something.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number eight has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number nine.
Amendment number nine. This amendment deletes the requirement to increase the maximum eligible contribution an applicant candidate may accept from an individual every four years by the average increase in the Consumer Price Index.
Mr. Volkey.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. So there is an automatic increase, or what's called an adjustment, a CPI adjustment in the bill, that takes the numbers up every, was it four years? This takes it out. This would keep the threshold static. And if the council at some point subsequently wants to come back and revisit the amounts and wants to amend them, as we often say, we will be here and we can certainly take that up. Move the amendment.
Second? Is there a second? Oh.
Ledbetter, second.
Okay. Mr. Baron.
Second, done. So administration asks the council to reject this amendment. Again, the provision here is to keep the program workable in the future. You know, you can see the same thing that has happened to the minimum wage. Had the minimum wage been indexed to inflation, we might not be in some of our same situations. The, the ability of the program to work practically for candidates requires that, as costs go up, as that we all know they are, that the, that the program adjusts accordingly. The current bill that you are voting on would have those numbers for the 2026 election. So we are, we are studying it here. So the next time that the numbers would be adjusted would be in 2030. So that's a long time from now. Can't predict what the costs will be. This will allow in 2030, the commission, the council, to fund a program and allow the program participants to be able to keep up with the cost of printings and bumper stickers and all of the assorted campaign swag. We ask that you reject this amendment.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, this is not really a question, but rather a comment. I just find the comparison to essentials for everyday living, groceries, materials to build, or put a roof over your head, that's a tough comparison to this program for me. So I think you, you'll see where I'm going to come out on this amendment.
So I guess, every year when we vote on the budget, we vote on merit increases, you know, tax increases, property tax, income tax. Why would we just let this one be on autopilot, when all the other ones that are just as significant to the county require us to come visit it?
It's a good question. So I think there are two components here, right? There's what the campaign would get in their match, and then the, what the county would fund. And Mr. Volkey has an amendment coming up, and we'll talk about that in the future. But the way the system works, the, the county executive shall propose, based on what the commission suggests would be the funding needs, it's the county council's decision on what to fund. So the county council can fund the, the program. We are specifically talking, this amendment would limit the ability for the candidates and the, the individual donors, donations, the candidates' match amounts to grow over time. So.
Right. So you're saying.
And, yes. And so, yes, a future county council could come back and change it, even if we pass it as is now. So I think putting a, a provision in the bill, the county executive, and, and we felt that it was appropriate.
Do you think this breaks the bill?
Do I think this breaks?
Yeah.
The bill?
On other bills, you said, period. Do you think this is one of those period amendments?
It's a, it's a light period? No, in all seriousness, Mr. Chair, I think the, this is an important provision, right? Will, will the program still function? Next election, yes. Three elections from now?
Yeah, but, but the council, two elections from now, can, can adjust the cost of living and salary increase and everything else we do to, to adjust the rate of inflation, or the CPI.
And a future council, if, if the cost of the program grew too high, could strike this provision down the road.
Yeah, but we're putting it on autopilot right now, but we don't do that with property taxes. We don't do that with income taxes. We don't do that with any other sort of meaningful, you know, tax thing, or, or merit raises, all those. They come to us every year, and we say, yep, we'll do that.
I, I think.
It's not on autopilot, that's all I'm suggesting.
The funding provision of this, the council is not ceding that decision.
You're, I'm saying.
We're talking about what the, what the campaign.
Correct. So the 125.
Participating program, yeah.
Will increase at the CPI, is what, is what this is saying.
That is the provision in the bill, yes.
Correct. Okay.
But just to clarify for what you were saying, but that, but it doesn't mean that the council has to fund up to that much to have in the, in the pool.
In the pool, yes, but the, the participant programs, right? You could have the situation that existed at the state level where the fund was depleted and, and the governor did not fund it. So the, the individual campaigns that are participating in the program would be eligible to a, a small escalator that is based on CPI, so that, you know, 125,000 could become 127 or 130,000, right? That is, but the, the pool of taxpayer dollars that are funding that remains in your hands.
Ms. Radvian.
I wanted to just provide an example of a, of a way that I do think we do that, and that was with property taxes. Of course, we have control over the, you know, the property tax rate, but we do put on autopilot the valuation of homes. So, you know, we have a process where homes are value, reevaluated every three years, right? We've got three different sections.
The state does that, yes.
And so, in a way, we do do that already with, you know, I don't have any, you know, I don't have any control over how much or how little the value of my home goes up or down. It's, you know, it's based on the market. So it's not exactly the same, but it is very similar in that we do do that in, in one regard. You know, the basis for our property taxes is sort of on autopilot. Not, we don't use CPI, we use, you know, we use the appropriate measure for, for real estate. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Ms. Fiedler.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am. Sorry. I apologize, but with public, public testimony, we close it down. I'm sorry. I still love you, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And to clear, sorry, sorry.
Ms. Fiedler.
I'll be very quick. I just want to say, the points that the chair has made, that's really what I was trying to get at with my comment, that every year we look at the budget, and there are so many factors that go into our budget decisions. Global economy, local economy, national economy. We just passed legislation for ADUs because we have folks that are having a hard time staying in their homes. So it makes me incredibly nervous to have this on autopilot and not have the ability to discuss it at the appropriate times every year.
Sorry, I have a. Maybe I steered us a little wrong here. My list was a little out of order. The, this amendment deletes the requirement that increases the maximum eligible contribution of an applicant candidate may accept. Is that the, that's the next one?
That's with this one. I was going to try to correct, but the next one is the one already.
Yeah, okay. So I switched, I switched the amendments. So this one does not, just hold that whole discussion we had for the next amendment. This amendment is dealing with the individual contributions. My apologies, I led us down that road.
Can I, can I, can I just say something?
Please.
Yeah. So there's two pieces to it, right? There are two CPI adjustments or escalators that are in this. One relates to the side of it that talks about the individual amounts, right? So the, up to 250, the $50, all of that. There's another one that talks about the contribution limits and how they would go up. That's the next one. So they are, in a way, part and parcel of the same thing, because conceptually they're the same. However, they are two separate pieces of this bill. So that's why they had to be two separate amendments. So this amendment deals with the maximum eligible contribution, and basically indexes that to CPI. Well, ties it to CPI. I shouldn't say indexes to an index, but you know what I'm saying.
And the maximum is 250?
Yeah. So I could only, if a candidate for either, for, for participating in this program cannot accept any contribution over $250, this amendment would remove, in the 2030 election, that to notch up based on rising costs.
Okay, I get it. I understand it.
I apologize for, for jumping the gun on another discussion.
Okay.
So we would still oppose this amendment?
No, no, I know you would, I know you would, but it's, it's, it's still the same effect, whether it's individual or, or the cap on the 125, rising by CPI, or the individual rising by CPI. The maximum contribution for a single donor in Maryland, individual, is $6,000. And it's been $6,000, probably, I think before it was $4,000. I think they raised it, they chose.
It was raised for the 2014 election.
Correct. So it's been $6,000 for like the last 10 years. And it'll stay $6,000 unless somebody changes it. So, you know, this, this is no different than that 250 being 250, unless we raise it, or the 125, being the 125, unless we raise it.
Correct. I think, again, to, to sort of build on the argument that was had before, as you can see from this discussion, this is a politically challenging thing to do. And in order to ensure that the program works most effectively, a best practice would be to ensure that the program matches the economic realities on the ground at the time. So that it would work the same in this election as it would work in a future election, same buying power, et cetera.
Totally hear you. I'm just, I'm just not sure I believe that the council can't make that decision in four years, or eight years, or I just don't see how this breaks the process.
Ask Congress about the minimum wage.
Well, that's Congress. I think at the county level, we have not, we have not been down that path. That's all. I just, I just don't see how this breaks the bill. I just don't.
I, again, the, the point here that I think we're making is the best practice for a program like this.
Are the other jurisdictions on, on the automatic CPI?
I would have to check, but yes, I think Montgomery County has that provision. We didn't come up with it.
We didn't come up with it.
In a vacuum, correct.
Yeah. I'd have to go back and look at which ones did.
Any additional comment?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Perhaps an easier way to ask that question is, do all of the existing jurisdictions have the provision in their legislation?
have the provision in their legislation?
Might take a moment for us to.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Oh, perhaps that wasn't an easier question. We don't have to.
I can tell you that Howard County does. That's the one I first looked at. And I believe Montgomery County does as well.
Those are the two programs that are currently operating. The Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Prince George's are all coming online for the 2026 election or 2024 election in Baltimore City's case.
Can I ask one more question?
Yep, please.
Do we know if those jurisdictions that are coming online also have the CPI adjustment?
I, I don't have, um, I don't have Baltimore Cities.
That's fine. I, you know, I know where I'm at on, on this one. So, you know, as an individual, if, if an individual wants to, you know, continue to, to fund that up to the 252 or 256, that's an individual choice. I will, Madam Vice Chair?
It's not a choice because they're limited by the provisions of the bill of $250 over an entire election cycle of four years. So without the escalation, it stay, it remains static at just 250,000, $250. Ooh, 250,000, that would be crazy. But it's a big difference between an individual donation of 6,000 not moving from four for 10 years. It's just, it's just different. It's a, it's a small amount of money.
Four and four, I, I'm actually on the same page as you for this particular amendment right here. So I think we're on the same page. The other one, not so much, but we can go, if, if, are there any additional comments? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Nine.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Miss Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Nine has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Ten.
Amendment Number Ten, this amendment deletes the requirement that the public contribution limits and qualifying contribution limit be increased every four years by the average increase in the Consumer Price Index.
Mr. Volkey?
Surprisingly, it's mine again. We already had this discussion, so I'm not going to rehash it, move the amendment.
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I think the, the point here is to, to create the best possible system that we can. Whether or not the, the program has to come back before for a politically charged discussion about whether or not we should spend more money on campaigns, it's going to be a hard lift for future councils. A, a provision like this, which reasonably ties the cost of campaigns to the cost of, um, what it, what it costs to live, what it costs to do anything, will ensure that this program has the best possible opportunity to be successful in the future. Understanding that, again, to my point that was made prematurely, that the county council is the final fiscal authority. The bill requires the county executive propose a budget that funds the program to ensure that it works. It does not obligate a future county council to fully fund that program if that county council decides for reasons that it, it decides by a majority that they need to fund the pro, that they don't title, twisted up on my words, that they do not have to fund the, the program based on what is proposed. They would have to fund the program based on the decisions on the ground at the time of that decision. So in, by ensuring that we have a program that grows with this county, that grows with the, the cost of doing business, that grows with the, the, the cost of TV and radio and, um, social media costs, all of that will ensure that this program has the best possible chance of success for candidates choosing to choose clean money. Ask that you oppose this amendment.
Any additional comments? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Ten.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Miss Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Uh, before my vote, so I believe, uh, that this system in place, that the caps that we have, the 125 and the 750, uh, are reasonable. I'm ultimately going to wind up supporting the entire bill. But I don't necessarily believe that the automatic increases on those caps should occur at this stage. Small philosophical belief. I don't think it breaks the bill. So in it, in that instance, I'm going to vote aye for this amendment.
That's four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Ten has been passed.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Withdrawing Amendment Eleven and Twelve. So I think that would move us to Thirteen.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Thirteen.
Amendment Number Thirteen, this amendment allows the county council member to select the member of the Public Campaign Financing System Commission from the Council, Council Manic District they represent.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this body appoints a lot of people and the way that this commission is set up, ultimately, while we get to vote on whoever goes on this commission, I wanted to put something in here that specifically says that our pick, our person from our council district is who goes on to this commission. As opposed to the system where we give suggestions to the county executive's office, they vet people, then they turn around and bring the nominations in front of us, and then we have to vote up or down. My reason for that is frankly, this is a protection for the minority party. There have been other commissions where I know that I have personally put up a person from my district and said, this is who I would like to see. The county executives' folks have vetted everybody, they have picked somebody else, they have brought that person down. And then because it comes down in an omnibus fashion, where you're sort of voting on all seven or however many people are on a commission, you don't necessarily have the ability to impact the vote. So this would allow us to ensure that the person we are selecting from our council district, provided that they don't have any major red flags, the county exec's office says this person shouldn't go on, um, they're going to be the person that we select. And ultimately, it'll still come in front of this body to have to vote on it, but this would put a little more protection for us to make sure that who we put in for our district is who's selected. Move the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barron.
So I think, from understanding the intent of this amendment, that's in the bill. The county council, it says Page Nine, Line Three, Public Campaign Financing System Commission. Commission consists of one member from each council manic district appointed by the county council.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Thank you. We've had that in other things. We've had that for other commissions. I don't want to identify particular people here in a public forum because I don't think that's fair to them, but there have been other pieces of legislation we've passed that have said the council members, you, your, each council district has to have somebody. That doesn't mean the person that I sent you got picked to go on to that commission. In fact, I can give examples, I'm not going to here, but I could give examples of people that I've said, this is who I want. So this says, one member from each council manic district appointed by the county council. What that means is, I can tell you who I want, you can pick people from your list, and all of a sudden you can bring down a resolution in front of us, and that resolution can say whoever, and then I have to vote up or down on all the people from every council manic district, as opposed to this, which specifically says I get to pick the person from my district who's going to be on this commission. That's what this amendment does.
I asked Ms. Blair Clausmeyer to raise.
If I, if I'm wrong, let me know, but that's the way I read it.
So this says that the, the county executive has nothing to do with the members from the council districts. The county council itself will appoint the seven members that are from each council district. And then he will appoint two. So that's what it says right now. So if you strike appointed, appointed by the county council, it'll just say selected by the county council member from that district.
What if it says selected and appointed?
Well, appointed means they're actually appointed. So the county executive wouldn't be appointing them, the council would be appointing them through a vote. You would vote, this council would have to vote to act as, you know, council has to vote to act. So, but the county council, the county executive would have nothing to do with those seven, the appointment of those seven members, only the other two members. So I, I mean, I, you could certainly add selected by the county council member to the appointed by the county council part.
Okay.
But that's, yeah.
I'll bring that amendment back then.
If that's your concern.
Yeah, that is my concern because it's happened and, and I think it's, I think it's wrong, but that's what I want to make sure. So you think that if this said selected by the council member and appointed by the council, that would guarantee that it would have to be the person that I picked is who the county executive has to put up as the nominee for that?
Okay, the county council, the county executive's not going to have, so what you'll get is you'll end up with a resolution of the county council for the seven members appointed by the county council.
Which is different from how the whole boards and commission systems work for everything
Which is usually how a lot of time, a lot of times what happens is the county council nominates and the county executive appoints, but this is seven appointments made by the county council. County executives out of those seven. He only has the other two.
That's, that's the way I took it initially, but.
I mean, I don't think it's clear, but I, I will withdraw it because I want to clean it up, because I'll bring back a better amendment, so.
Madam Vice Chair? Oh, I would, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
So the way I read this was, it is the way we do the Board of Appeals.
Right.
Essentially, yes.
That's how it does.
Written like this. Yeah, I, I, I think it's, I think it gets what you want, the way it's written.
Good thing is you have video now and you got the intent from the administration that if you were in a court of law, they've just, uh, stated what their intent was.
Just doesn't hold up, she's not under oath.
Please raise your right hand, Ms. Harwood. All right. So is, is your intent to withdraw this, this, so there was a second?
I just had, like, while we're on this topic, I would love to just ask a question before it gets withdrawn, if that's all right? I mean, I'm, if, you know, I'm just curious, I mean, ultimately, the resolution appointing these folks is introduced by one person. Is that one person bound to, I mean, suppose, just suppose I was going to be a jerk and, which I'm never a jerk, I, I was going to appoint, um, you know, the person that I wanted for my district, and then I was going to appoint the person that I wanted for everyone else's district too. Okay, obviously that might get voted down, but what if I did it in such a way that I knew it would have enough votes, but it could, you know, penalize the minority district? Like, I'm going to, you know, pick somebody that I know Councilman Volkey totally hates. Well, dislikes, disagrees with and doesn't feel adequately represents what he would like to see on this, um, commission. So is that a possible scenario or is that just too, is, I mean, is that?
So, so I understand what you're saying. So, so, yes, you're right, probably the chair or somebody is going to introduce this resolution for the seven people. So if we add Mr. Volkey's, you know, everybody gets to pick one, and there's one resolution for all seven, you could, it's an up or down vote. You could still vote no because you don't like the ones from one, three, and seven, or, you know, you could still vote no, um, on it, but, you know, that's amongst the council members as to how to deal with, you know, that issue. But I think that happens either way, quite frankly, but.
Assuming they're all in a single resolution.
Assuming they're all in a single resolution.
Which some other appointments, we don't necessarily do that way. We don't do in a single resolution. I mean, well, especially ones that are staggered, we can't do in a single resolution.
Most things are staggered.
If I may, I think, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
If I may, um, the, the bill was drafted to ensure that the county council had control of the commission. That was sort of a best practice of how this would work. We can't legislate, uh, a rogue or, I don't, rogue's probably not the right word because they would get a majority, jerk, uh, on the council from, from doing something like that. I think the, the way that we drafted this was to ensure that the county council as a body, because you have to act as a body, would have control of those seven appointments.
Well, I want to, Ms. Fiedler, so your light on.
I was just ready to withdraw my second.
Okay. Uh, yeah, just do, because we're, Madam Vice, oh, I saw her light go on to you. Uh, so did you want to withdraw your second?
Withdraw my second.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Withdraw Amendment Thirteen.
All right. Madam Secretary, uh, please read Amendment Number Fourteen.
Amendment Number Fourteen, this amendment removes the exception for when the county executive is not required to make an appropriation to the Public Campaign Financing Fund.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amendment Fourteen and Fifteen, while they're not one amendment and I think they could be one amendment, um, but they get at the same idea, which is, there is a provision in this that provide, that, that requires the county executive to fund what is recommended by the commission, if I'm understanding it correctly. And there are some caveats where it says, except this provided in these certain situations, you don't have to do the funding. There's the exception in B. So really, you need both of them together for this to make any sense. But just talking about fourteen in a vacuum, this removes the exception provisions where it says the county executive doesn't have to fund in these certain situations. So I almost think fifteen should come before fourteen, but, uh, because fifteen allows it to be discretionary language on whether the county executive funds it or not. And then sixteen takes away the exception because you don't need the exception if fifteen passes. If fifteen passes and it's a may and not a shall fund, then you don't need an exception on when the county executive can and can't fund, because it always becomes discretionary to fund by a county executive. So really, the order of these amendments is a little out of whack. But that's what fourteen and fifteen do together, but since we're only on fourteen, I would move the amendment.
Is there a second?
Mr. Bennett, if I get anything wrong, you feel free to jump in.
Both of them strike the exception. Fifteen, so fourteen takes away the exception. It says always included. Fifteen takes, uh, takes the exception and makes the inclusion in the budget permissive.
I got you. So they build on each other.
No, if you do fifteen, you don't need fourteen.
Right, that's what I thought. Right. Basically, fifteen builds on the assumption that if fourteen goes, it carries over fourteen into fifteen. I'm just going to withdraw fourteen and go to fifteen, same comments on fifteen. Just make this easier. Move the amendment fifteen.
All right, is, is there a motion to adopt amendment? Well, I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, please read, as you were, please read Amendment Number Fifteen.
Amendment Number Fifteen, this amendment makes the annual appropriation for the Public Campaign Financing Fund permissive as opposed to mandatory.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Vol, Mr. Bah, Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, how this will work in practice is an independent body will look at the needs of the fund. The county executive will have to bring that down before you in the budget and budget for it. Nothing in this bill can abdicate the county council's final fiscal authority. So what this amendment really does is allow a county executive to play games with a proposal. The, the best practice that we put in this bill was that an independent body would do the assessment of what needs to be funded. The county council will bring, or the county executive will bring it to the county council, and then the county council will make the appropriate decision on funding. That is how our system works. That is how it should work. This amendment would remove the, the ability of the commission to independently set that number that it needs. It would allow the county executive to say, I got your number. We're not in a, the provisions under the exceptions that are extreme financial. under the exceptions that are extreme financial situations, but you know what, I'd rather move it over here. And then the way our system would act, the county council, unlike, you can't add, unlike, it's not like a Board of Education request, so you couldn't add it back in. This ensures that the commission's recommendation comes before you, and then you shall do with it what you wish.
Oh, Mr. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If this body approves this legislation and puts this program into place, if we were to approve this amendment, we would be abdicating our own legislative will of the code to the county executive. Am I understanding that right? The county executive could just disregard the fact that we have set up this program in our code and can say, I don't want to fund this this year.
Correct. Or could triple the funding.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would love it if this council was bound by the recommendations of the Spending Affordability Committee, Commission, but we're not, right? I don't know, you all can tell me if I'm wrong, but where else in our code does an independent commission, I mean, even salary standards that comes in front of us, they'll make reports, and then we decide what to do with it. Ultimately, what we're doing is saying to this independent commission, whatever these folks pick, the county executive has to fund, and his, but, his or her budget, and then whatever comes in front of us, we can decide to cut from it. To the point about if the commission came in and the county executive decided not to fund it, if this council made appropriate cuts and asked in a supplemental budget that the money be added back in, that's typically standard practice, the executive would look at that supplemental budget request and say, this is something that, yes, the council is expressing a will that we fund, and so they could even come in with a supplemental and do it if the council found other cuts. So my point with this is, why are we mandating county executives to fund this minimum level? Shouldn't that be the discretion that the framers of our Charter of Government basically gave to the executive and then to the council to be able to fund as they see fit? This is locking us in to what an unelected third-party board is, or commission is saying that we need to fund. I just don't think that's appropriate, so that's why I'm doing it.
I think you're conflating the county executive funding in his budget proposal and the county council actually passing a budget with it in it. So I think we are leaving the, the final fiscal authority where it belongs, in the hands of the county council. But this program is important enough to ensure that because it deals with elections, because it deals with campaigns, that as best we can, we depoliticize the recommendations of this commission and meet the needs of the program. So our, our opinion is that this should be presented to the county council in the form that it is recommended from the commission. And then the county council, with a majority vote, can make changes as it sees fit.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Ms. Blair Klausmeyer, is there anywhere else in the code that you know of that the county executive is bound to a funding recommendation by a board or commission that you're aware of?
Legislative branch? Legislative branch?
Our own budget?
Well, I can certainly go back and look at that, because I don't. But, I mean, we are, the county council has to fund the legislative branch.
So that's it? So our budget?
Your budget.
That's the only thing in the county.
Well, I'm not saying that's the only thing. That's what, you know, that's what Mr. Barron whispered to me, but I can go back and look and see where the other mandate, if there's other, what the other mandatory funding. There are things that are mandatory funded. I'm not sure they come from boards and commissions, but I can go back and look.
And this is the commission that we appoint, right? Okay. Got it. Any additional?
I was just going to throw out, it's not exactly the boards and commission like we're talking about, but the Board of Education, we're required to fund maintenance of effort.
That's an A-plus on that answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I actually agreed to some extent with both of you. So I'm going to support this amendment because I agree that I don't think that there is another board or commission where the county executive is required to fund what is recommended. I have an idea of where I think this amendment will end up this evening, so I hope we can discuss again, because I understand what you're saying could be problems or challenges in the future, so just want to explain my vote before we take the vote.
Seeing no additional lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Fifteen.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Fifteen has been defeated.
Bill number?
There's.
Was there some more in there? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry.
We could do it next.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Sixteen. I told my daughters it was going to be a short night because there was only two bills on the agenda. Boy, was I wrong.
Amendment Number Sixteen, this technical amendment corrects a misidentification of the exception subsection to funding for the Public Campaign Financing Fund.
Mr. Barron?
I want to thank staff for catching this again, longstanding county executive policy to oppose typos and errors. Please support.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt Amendment Number Sixteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Sixteen.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Sixteen has been adopted.
All right. So Bill Number Twenty-Five, Twenty-Three will be heard on June 5th, 2023. Yeah? Oh. Is there any, is there any additional business to be brought before this county council at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there, is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Thursday, May 18th at 7:00 PM, when we will meet at Crofton High School for a public hearing on the proposed FY24 budget for Anarona County. You can sign up to speak at the public hearing using the, our online form on Anarona County or aacounty.org. That was the longest, two bills.